Then we will call the special meeting of the Calaveras County Planning Commission to order and get started with the Pledge of Allegiance. There any staff announcements today?
Good morning, Madam Chair. No announcements. Thank you.
And no agenda changes, I assume? Thank you. Then we'll go ahead and open up the general public comment period, which is an opportunity for members of the public to speak to the Planning Commission on items within the subject purview of the Planning Commission, but not on the agenda today. Is there anybody here who would like to just provide some general public comment on something we're not going to be discussing today? Nope. Then we will close the general public comment period unless Annette has somebody online.
I do, but they're here for the study session.
The -- we have no items on the consent agenda?
Yes. We need to take --
We'll give the public an opportunity to comment on the zoning ordinance today. Yes. And (laugh) grab your stuff. Okay. We'll get started with our informational item, and I'm not sure who's going to introduce this item.
Oh, that would be me.
Gina.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our first study session being held to discuss the draft update to our county zoning code. Just I'll give you just a quick introduction and then we'll introduce our consultant, and she's going to have a very nice presentation for us. Just to kind of reiterate, we have broken out the entire draft code into three sections. Today, we will be opening up the discussion and review of the first section, which is the zoning districts and use regulations. Subsequent to this review, we will have a discussion on countywide regulations, and then finally, third but not last, administrative procedures. So today, we are just going to be getting an overview from our consultant, Martha Miller, with Miller &amp; Associates. Just to, like I said, remind you, the purpose of this update is to update land use regulations to reflect current uses and practices, in addition to create a clear and more concise user-friendly code, and then last but not least, to be compliant with the 2019 general plan. As a reminder, this is a study session, so we will not be making any decisions. We are only taking feedback, not only from you, but from the public as well. There's a lot of information, so just be patient, and we'll get through it. As I've mentioned before, this is at your pace, so whatever you choose, you know, we'll just roll, and we'll -- however long it takes, it takes. So the introduction that Martha will be presenting is basically just to kind of introduce the process and the first section of the code. Then, of course, we'll open it up for discussion. She'll go through a pretty nice PowerPoint that'll explain exactly how this process is going to take place. Just so everyone knows, comments can be submitted at any time during this process. It does not have to be submitted during the study sessions. Feel free to email the department, give us a call. We prefer that if you have comments relative to the proposed changes, please put those in writing for us, because we will be collecting those and then reviewing them at the end of the study session process in preparation for the final draft for consideration. So again, this is not the only time that you can submit comments. Our staff is available by phone or counter, email. We just encourage everyone to ask questions and get involved, because this is a code for all of us. It's not just for the planning department for us to use. This is a code for all of you. These changes are not intended to be impactful to the public, but they are intended to help you do what you intend to do with your land. So with that, I'd just like to introduce Martha Miller with Miller Planning, and let's get this show on the road.
Great. Thank you, and I'll share my screen for the presentation. And so it's good to be before you introducing the preliminary draft regulations for the comprehensive zoning code update. And so as Gina mentioned, I have a presentation where I'll give an overview of the project and of the preliminary draft zone district and use regulations, and then we'll have time for the questions and discussion and review of the draft standards. And to kind of reiterate what Gina already covered, really, the purpose of the study session is to provide an introduction of the preliminary draft regulations. The content, the context, answer questions, and get any feedback that you're prepared to give at this time. Again, no decisions are being made, and the documents will remain available throughout the process, and comments and questions and discussion can occur throughout and be submitted kind of at any time. So the project is a comprehensive update of the county zoning code to be concise and user-friendly set of regulations to regulate land use and development and help implement the general plan. So while your general plan sets kind of that overarching vision for the county, the zoning code sets the rules and regulations that apply to land use and development that, as it comes forward, ensure that that new development and uses are consistent with and help implement the general plan. So there's a number of objectives for the overall update, including implementing the general plan, eliminating inconsistencies, clarifying terminology, being intuitive, user-friendly, creating a transparent and predictable, consistent process, responding to community concerns, and promoting the type of development such as infill and mixed-use development within community areas identified in your general plan, standardizing and simplifying the review process, and overall being consistent with state and federal law. I do want to highlight something that Gina also highlighted, the code usability portion objective of this effort. So as we got into the project, we really realized the number one issue with the code is its usability, and the current code, having been amended numerous times over decades, is really difficult to use and understand. It's complex, it's redundant, it's hard to interpret, so a big part of the effort has really been to simplify, reorganize, and clarify existing requirements and practices. And so you may hear a lot of carrying forward the existing or consistent with the existing. So sometimes it seems like, well, what's the point of that? You know, what's really being updated? And the point is really with your current code that no one reads the -- that reads the code comes to the same conclusion, at least in a timely manner. It's really complex, and even for staff who use the code every day. Again, I just want to highlight that as an important part of this effort. So we began the project with an assessment of your current code, your current development context, review of your general plan. We talked to people who use your code. We spent a lot of time talking with staff, and we summarized our observations in a code analysis memo, which was presented to the board in the beginning of the process and also included in your staff report. From there, we started drafting preliminary regulations for review, and we're beginning the review of those preliminary drafts today. So as Gina mentioned, to do this, to facilitate review, we broke down the code into three major parts, and that's because the code is a large document, it's a dense document, so breaking it down into kind of discrete chunks really helps to manage -- is more manageable for review. So once we have study sessions and get comments on all three of the parts, we will be revising all of the preliminary drafts and preparing a complete draft code, which will then go before the Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors through a formal hearing and adoption process. So again, no decisions are being made at the study sessions. We're presenting, we're answering questions, we're taking feedback throughout the process, which will then collectively be taken together for consideration and make revisions, and that will be reviewed again. So it's kind of an iterative process. We always like to hear as much as we can as early in the process as possible, but at the same time, you know, this isn't the only opportunity to review and consider and provide feedback. So again, the topic of today's study session is the Zone District and Use Regulations. That is the document that's available online and that has been provided to you. What these do is they specify what uses are permitted, conditionally permitted or prohibited in each zone district, and what their development standards for buildings are. So there's four major parts: the Zone District Standards, overlay zones, standards for specific uses, and use classifications, which I'll give an overview of each one of these parts. So the first is the Zone District Standards, and the zoning code contains sets of zoning districts, which the county overall is divided into these districts, and that includes resource zones, residential zones, commercial, industrial, and then public and semi-public zones, in which in each of these sets, there's multiple zoning districts which respond to land use designations in your general plan. The majority of these base zoning districts included in the code update are consistent with, you know, our really existing districts that you have currently. The update does include two new base zones, the Historic Center and the Open Space Zone, and these are both to implement general plan policies. The update also proposes to remove two base zones, and this is really intended for kind of streamlining and simplifying your code. So those two base zones that are proposed to be removed include the rural commercial zone, which is really redundant with your C1 zone, and the rural home industry zone, which is intended to allow small-scale industries which are secondary to a principal residential use. So in the interest of simplicity and simply, you know, kind of getting rid of additional processes, this kind of intent can be accomplished through use allowances rather than requiring a property that is specifically zoned or rezoned RM. So it's still able to accomplish that intention through a simpler and more straightforward manner, and so that's why that zone is proposed to be removed. But for each zone, the zoning code then sets the use regulations and development standards that apply specifically to each zone. So there are standards that are district-specific. And again, those relate to general plan land use designations and, for the most part, zones that exist today in the county. So for each zoning district, there's use allowances which are presented in tables, and those identify whether a use is allowed in the zoning district, what the review process is, and if there's any special standards that apply. So the tables use the new use classifications that are included in the last section of the document, which are really definitions of land uses. And I'll give an example of kind of a table, and you've seen these in the document, but basically how you would use this is you determine what use you're interested in, and those are listed in the left-hand column. You see, you match that up with the zone district that you're located in and identify if that land use is allowed and what type of review is required, whether it's permitted, whether a conditional use permit is required. And then the right-hand column has cross-references to any standards that relate specifically to that use, if that's applicable. So for the most part with that update, existing uses are generally carried forward, and there's a number -- because the -- while you have a new general plan and there's new things in there, it didn't wholesale kind of change the direction of the county. Your vision really stays, you know, if we look at it kind of globally, fairly stable. And so it was really intended to be a cleanup and a clarification of the existing use allowances. There are refinements that are in the use allowances, and those primarily, I would say, relate to the new defining and grouping of uses. So in some cases, there's a new use type that's included, and for example, community gardens, that's a new type of use that currently isn't in your code. So the allowances for community gardens, that would be kind of a refinement to use allowances. There's also uses that already exist within the county but aren't listed or defined in your current code and really have come about through interpretation. So things such as the animal sanctuary, cultural institutions, which include museums, pasting rooms, these are all uses that exist but aren't currently kind of separately defined in your code. There's other uses that are currently allowed but not specifically called out in certain zones, things such as business services, that's kind of a land use that we define and is consistent with the office professional zone, for example. So while today you wouldn't look in your code and see business services as an allowed use, it generally is currently allowed, it's just newly kind of defined. And then there's adjustments to permit levels where projects have been -- maybe have the potential for impacts, or maybe they typically don't have impacts, and you want to adjust the permit level that way. So some examples are hotels in the CT Zoom, C2 Zone currently are permitted, proposed to require conditional use permit to ensure there's that opportunity for review for traffic or other potential impacts. Conversely, something like daycare centers in your office professional or CP zone currently requires a conditional use permit, that was seen as a use that is something that wanted to be, that is appropriate in that zone, and that may not always rise to the level of a full conditional use permit. So that's proposed to be adjusted to an administrative use permit. So when people are reviewing these use allowances in the use table, the questions are, you know, is this an appropriate use in this zone, and is the permit level appropriate? The Zone District Standards also include development standards, which address the form and location of new development. Common types of these standards are height limitations, setback requirements, density allowances, and for the most part, existing standards are carried forward and presented in table format for clarity. There's some refinements to include things such as, you know, cross-references or making sure that pointing out the requirements for defensible space apply, so there are, again, not an overall change in the development standards, but making them more clear and presenting them in a clear manner. The next section is the overlay zones. So overlay zones are laid over and based zoning districts. So they can apply to various zoning districts in situations where the modification of certain standards is appropriate because of certain circumstances or conditions. Right now, you -- the code uses overlay zones and combining zones kind of interchangeably. So we kind of looked at those together, wanted to have a consistent approach to them, we evaluated them for the usefulness in implementing general plan or other county policies, are they needed? Overall, the goal is to minimize the total number of overlay zones, and this is in the interest of simplifying your code and having the least kind of layers of regulation as possible. And so as a result, some are proposed to be -- we're proposing some new ones, carrying forward some, or revising and removing others. So I'll summarize those real quick. Overlay zones carried forward or revised include the airport overflow overlay zone. This is an overlay zone that requires new development in the airport influence area to be consistent with the Calaveras County Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan and really any FAA regulations. So this is really just kind of pointing out that new development needs to be consistent with those regulations. Your environmental protection overlay zone, this is revised to kind of clarify the purpose of this overlay zone. So right now, it's used in two different ways. So one is to identify areas of known sensitive resources where development potential may still exist. So that's pointing out, hey, this is an environmentally sensitive habitat area, and so that, we've carried forward that purpose of it. But right now, there's also -- it also serves a second purpose, which is identifying areas where development potential has already been transferred off or otherwise limited. So rather than having that kind of combined with this environmental protection overlay zone, those areas where development potential has already been transferred off, those are the areas proposed to go into that new open space-based zone district. So we're really just clarifying the purpose of this overlay zone, having it have one purpose rather than confounding two purposes. Kind of similar with the plan development overlay zone, this is revised to really serve as the purpose to allow the county to consider coordinated development projects that don't follow conventional zoning. So the county can review and consider and approve something that doesn't follow the conventional zoning but is a project that the county likes and supports and wants to approve. And so it's been revised to really serve as that process rather than also serving as a design review process. So areas where design reviews required will instead be incorporated into a new design review overlay zone. And again, that's for clarity, just to, you know, have that more kind of consistent, clear designation. So that brings us to the new overlay zone. Again, the design review overlay zone, this identifies areas of the county where a design review is required, and that's currently McCollany Hill. Another new overlay zone is a specific plan overlay zone, identifying areas where there's specific plans or where specific plans are required by the general plan. In the interest of simplification, we also are looking at removing a number of overlay zones, and these are ones that are redundant with other requirements or where we can accomplish the same intent of those overlay zones through a more straightforward process, again, trying to reduce the amount of kind of administrative process that needs to go through. So the mineral extraction combining zone is redundant with state requirements, and the zoning code does not need to repeat those. Mobile home park combining zone, these development standards have been incorporated into specific use standards and do not need to be tied to overlay zone. Similarly, the off-site parking combining zone, allowances for off-site parking will be incorporated into the parking standards. And then finally, the hazardous waste facility overlay zone is redundant with your hazardous waste management plan. So again, you don't need to have those regulations in two different places. The third section of the document is the standards for specific uses, and these are standards and requirements applicable to certain uses that have specific needs or the potential to impact surrounding properties. So there's a number of uses that have these specific standards, and some of them are existing standards that are really carried forward, and these are -- include those for accessory uses, agricultural homestays or dew ranches, animal production, camping campgrounds, mobile home parks. Again, these were just those standards that were in your combining zone, moved into the standards for specific uses, and then also special events. So those are existing standards carried forward. Other standards are either new or revised, and I'll quickly go through those. Accessory dwelling units, these standards have been updated for consistency with state law. Animal keeping, new provisions clarify the allowances for keeping animals as an accessory to a primary residential use, and these work in concert with your title fix. These are animal keeping standards, again, that are accessory to residential uses, animal production, or, you know, kind of the agricultural part of it that is separate than this. This is just accessory to residential. Community gardens, this is a new use, and there's new standards for management, buildings, equipment, maintenance, produce associated with those. Emergency shelters carried forward your existing standards except those that are actually preempted by state law. So that was a cleanup to remove those additional standards. Employee housing for farm workers, these are new standards consistent with state law as well as your housing element. Farmers markets, there's new standards that address permits, management, and hours of operation. For home occupations, these are revised standards that provide consistent allowances for home-based businesses. So right now, your current standards really call out separate kind of specific businesses. This provides kind of consistent allowances for home-based businesses, including cottage food operations, and this is in line with, you do have general plan policies specifically geared towards incentivizing home-based businesses and entrepreneurship. Outdoor dining and seating, these are new standards for the location, parking and litter removal. Parking is not required for outdoor dining areas less than 500 square feet. Any amount over that would require parking for that dining area. Outdoor display and sales standards, address size, allowable merchandise location. Single-room occupancy, these are development standards for single-room occupancy or SROs, which is a new type of housing allowance incorporated into your housing element, so we included development standards for those types of uses. Telecommunication facilities, there's new standards for permit requirements, citing and design of these facilities. Temporary uses, standards carried forward but revised to incorporate allowances for mobile vending. And then finally, wind and solar energy systems have expanded allowances for these energy systems that are used primarily to reduce onsite consumption of energy. And then the final part of the document is really kind of a reference document. It is the definitions of uses, called use classifications. It's the definitions of land uses that are regulated in your zoning code. So every land use regulated in the zoning code is defined, and we took -- we really consolidated those lists of zone by zone use allowances in the current code and organized them based on common function or characteristics, and they're organized into broader use groups allowing for the consideration of kind of new or unanticipated uses. So whereas right now, your code may call out separately bookstore, gift shop, drugstore, variety store, and these are combined into one category, which would be a general retail sale. Again, a broader use group based on those common characteristics, and that's really, again, to help in the administration and avoid the need for kind of constant updates of the use classifications and definitions. So that's kind of high-level summary of the contents of the Zone District and Use Regulations, and I will hand it back to Gina if there's any anything that she wanted to cover that I missed, and I'm happy then to stand and participate in the discussion.
Okay. So as said numerous times before, this is entirely up to you and your pace. If you would like to go line for line, we can certainly do that. I suggest taking them in sections as described by Martha, indicating, you know, perhaps going through the zone districts, the base zone districts first, then the overlay, then standards. We can intermix them if you'd like. I guess we can just kind of open it up and see where it falls, but Michelle, do you have a preference?
I would
I was thinking, just working our way through zoning by district, then by individual zone, but I'd like to hear from everybody else.
Well, one thing I wanted to ask is, when we were going to get to the public comment? After we discussed the whole thing, or?
I think, let's see how all the discussion goes by item and see if it feels like we need to take comments on that individual item so that we don't get lost and people don't forget what they wanted to say.
Right, and if, if at any time since, you know, we're kind of, this is kind of unfamiliar territory for us, and we're not sure how it's going to kind of play out. If, if you do have comment at all during the process, you know, don't be afraid to, to raise your hand perhaps, and if it's, if it's an appropriate time, then we can stop and, and let you speak and, and, you know, voice concerns or comments or ask questions as we're going along. And we'll just kind of have to see how it plays out.
Exactly. And because this process is likely to be over at least the course of a month and potentially into next month, and I'm assuming everybody's not going to be able to be here every day for every piece of it, we'll give you an opportunity today, if you're not going to be able to be back, to tell us about whatever section you have a particular interest in. So we'll, we'll ask you guys about that at some point. And just wanted to kind of give everybody a heads up that because we are likely to continue this meeting to tomorrow, which is a regular planning commission meeting date, but which we don't have any items for, we'll probably try to stop a little bit early today, sometime maybe between two and three, instead of going all the way till four o'clock. For those people who will be back tomorrow, they'll at least give them a little time at the end of the day to take care of other business. But if you guys have ideas on that or concerns, we'll give you an opportunity to talk.
So I made multiple copies of the draft, and I see that you guys have taken those.
Gabriel is getting one.
Is he getting one? Okay, so I asked that you take one for yourself. If you have somebody else that's interested in it, certainly, but don't take multiple copies just for yourself, just because it is a lengthy document, it is fairly costly to print, and I would like enough to go around for everyone. So if you're not interested in a hard copy, it is posted on the county website, on the planning page, in various places. So feel free to jump on the internet and take a look at it. You might find it to be an interesting read.
And Gina, maybe talk a little bit about that the map is available.
Yeah, so I'm assuming that most of you are probably here because you've gotten notices from us indicating that your parcels zoning is likely to change as a result of the update that's drafted. And, and basically, as Martha has, has indicated, there are some proposed changes to a couple zone districts. One, we are proposing to eliminate or delete the RM zone as well as the RC zone, for which then if your property happens to be zoned RC or RM, we will have to zone that another zone that's appropriate. For the RM zoned parcels, those are proposed to be changed to a zone that is compatible with the land use designation set forth through the general plan. For those parcels that are zoned RC, the proposal is to amend those to C1, local commercial. Now, if you feel that there is a need for your property to, say, be zoned C2, instead, reach out to me individually, and we'll have that discussion. As I was going through the map, the land use map, I did happen to notice that there's likely some of those that may fall into that C2 category rather than C1, but on its face, just as an initial, you know, thought, we just decided to zone them all C1. So again, if you're one of those people that falls into that category, reach out to me individually, and we'll talk about the likelihood of maybe zoning your parcel C2 rather than C1. The other zones that are likely to change as a result of the update are all overlay zones. We are proposing to, to basically separate the design review portion of the current planned development section of code to the design review overlay zone. So for anyone that is zoned with a PD combining zone for the purposes of design review, the proposal is to change that from PD to DR. And just so people understand how that is going to work in the future, that is an overlay zone that will require a process for those parcels that are in a community plan area with adopted design guidelines. Currently, the only adopted design guidelines in the entire county happened to be McCollum Hill, but there is an opportunity, if desired, for other community plan areas to, to come before the board and have, you know, a formal committee appointed for the purpose of developing those guidelines for board consideration. So until then, other communities that are zoned, parcels with the zoning DR, there will be no process for design review until those design guidelines are actually adopted by the board, so.
Why would we have the designation DR when there's no overlay map that includes that parcel?
Yeah, good question. So dating back into the eighties, I think all of us can remember the eighties, we had numerous community plans that were throughout Arnold, Avery Hathaway Pines, San Andres, Valley Springs, so on and so on. Just about every community had a community plan, and those community plans had set forth some development, you know, restrictions, guidelines, a vision, and during that time, we had actually a DR overlay zone. And so each community plan designated certain parcels, mainly commercial, with the DR overlay for the purpose of the appointed committees within each one of those community plan areas to actually review development projects in coordination with the community plans. In 1988, the Board of Supervisors, for whatever reason, abolished design review, rolled all the design review process into the PD process, making the code what we have today, which is obviously serving two different purposes and making things very confusing. With the adoption of the 2019 general plan, those community plans, as they once were, are no longer valid. So now we don't have those specific design elements that were rolled into those community plans. And as I said before, without actually design guidelines, we have no criteria to vet those development projects against, and it makes it very difficult to actually come up with, you know, concise.
But why don't we wait until there is a design review overlay map that includes these properties before we put the DR at the end, which would just raise confusion?
The DR is going to, I don't, I don't think it's going to raise confusion. So right now, because we want to clean up the planned development section of code and truly make it a, a traditional planned unit development overlay zone, there's, there's a need to remove that design review element from the current PD. And unless you're going to put a placeholder, unless you're going to put that combining zone on something, you know, it's not going to mean anything in, in the future. So it's kind of just a placeholder until the communities actually feel the desire to adopt guidelines. And if they don't, then that's.
But for right now, the DR, I mean, as proposed, the DR would not mean anything.
Correct.
Which would, I think, raise confusion, that people see their zoning with a DR, and they find out it stands for design review. They have to take another step in order to find out there is no design review that currently applies to their property.
So when we get to that section of the overlay zones, we can have that further discussion, and maybe, you know, there's some other proposals from the other commissioners. I'm assuming you might have an alternate, alternative to design review, but we actually have design review combining zone or overlay zone currently in the code. So it only makes sense to roll those over, and I said, as a placeholder, unfortunately. But again, that'll be up to the individual communities as to whether or not they feel the, the need to actually regulate the aesthetics and architecture of their community.
Would likely, we come along with a new community. Is that not necessary? Just one sec.
It's not necessary because the design guidelines are a separate document.
Please come up to the podium.
My name is Chris Nieber, decades property owner, business owner throughout California. I was instrumental in forming this document, the McCollum Hill Community Plan, with the entire community of McCollum Hill. We adopted it through the direct democracy unanimously in the town hall. It's not a suggestion, it is our instructions to our employees and representatives. It has design review in it. It's very limited. It's historic listed landmarks only. It's run by accredited archaeologists, anthropologists, and people with a lot of experience at keeping our community economically viable. It's working fine. This is no time to change it.
There is no contemplation of changing anything from Oak Hill. So are you clear on that?
Thank you, because I saw something come up on this board that was, did not make that clear.
Okay, so we can talk about that when we get to that, that what they're discussing now is just changing the PD combining zone to a DR for design review, because PD is used for two purposes now. In other communities, it will not change anything in Oak Hill.
And actually, McCollum Hill is already zoned DR. For those parcels that are in their historic district that are affected by the design guidelines that are adopted, they're already zoned DR. So we can have that further discussion about other communities when we get to the overlay zones.
We're not attempting to change anything about what the community of Oak Hill has already.
You aren't attempting to change this document, correct? You are not attempting to change this document.
This is the zoning code update. That is, that is a previous community plan.
And, but the answer, this community plan is part of the, the general plan update.
We're not discussing the general plan update. That was done in 2019.
My understanding is you have nothing to worry about. The McCollum Hill plan is fully recognized and will be fully recognized. It's just a question of whether some other communities might join in in the design review overlay. But you're protected.
Thank you.
It's, yeah, it's providing the option to other communities. Okay.
Okay.
Where were we? DR? We'll discuss that.
We'll discuss that when we get to the overlay zone, so.
Thank you.
Yeah. Did you have any other?
I have a very easy, if we're going to get into the specifics.
Well, I, I would like to start getting into the specifics, but we need to take it a section at a time. So what I don't want to do is jump all over the place. I don't think that's going to be very helpful for anyone. If we can start with the use allowances, I think that would be an appropriate beginning.
Yes, and I, I think for the public, explain that, that the document that you've provided copies of is actually the proposed ordinance, so that the tables are not just illustrative, they are what would be seen in the zoning code.
So the whole code is going to appear differently. So it's not where.
Just one moment, before we jump into this, I think we need to reiterate that nobody who has a legally conforming use today on their property will lose their ability to continue that use. That, that's not what's being proposed. So even if your zoning was to change, like the MH zone going away, or anything that exists today and that was legally created will be able to continue.
Right. So I will use the example of the one RM zone that has an approved conditional use permit that currently operates a small machine fabrication type business. The use permit was approved in the RM zone back in the, I believe, the late eighties. That use is continued, and there is, that validates the conditional use permit. And even if the base zone were to change for that particular parcel, that use permit is still a valid use permit, and it runs with the land, unless, of course, the, the use itself is discontinued for more than 12 months. So even though we're talking about potential changes, if there is a legally established use on that land that is no longer conforming after this code is adopted, it will be allowed to continue unless discontinued for more than 12 months. Then the use will go away, and you will only be subject to what's allowed in the new base zone. Or I should say the base zone, because we're not really changing most zones.
Our intention is not to take anything away from anybody. I saw two people that had their hands up. If you, you would like to come up one at a time and ask your question.
So I can't be here for an entire month to work all the way through this, and a point that you made, that no one who has an existing usage on their land legally will have anything taken away from them. Is that correct? That's throughout this whole entire process, correct? Not just the zoning part, but also the whole updating of the plan. Okay, here's my question. So this new community, like an open space zoning, for instance, if that person who has, gets put into that category, into open space zoning, then does that take away the value of that property? If a legacy, generations from now, the children want to develop that property, for instance, are we taking value away from the owners by changing and restricting the future use of these properties? And if we are, are we compensating the owners now?
That would have happened during the, that general plan mapping, but you want to speak specifically.
So specifically, we're, we're not, again, we're not, this, this process is not changing everybody's zoning. We are not going through, as we did with the general plan and the, and the zoning cleanup subsequent to, we're not, we're not changing the zoning of parcels to be consistent with the general plan. We've already done that. That was done in 2020. What we're talking about is updating the county zoning code. We've, we have initiated or proposed two new zone districts, the elimination of two base zones, and, and subsequent changes to some overlay zones, most of which will not mean a single thing to any of you. For instance, the height limitation zone, you're already regulated through the airport plan, and we're simply just combining two overlay zones into one, no change at all. No change at all. The plan development, we've already discussed that. Parcels that are zoned RC are going to go to R1, or C1. There's only, I think, 13 parcels out of the entire county. So when we're talking about change, it's generally speaking, not significant. If you have any specific concerns about what your parcel is being zoned to, then please reach out to the department. We do have on the website, there is a portal, a public portal that was, that was developed by our GIS department that actually will show you what your current zoning is and what the proposed zoning will be.
That is my question right there. Do we each have to ask for a different zone? If in fact, if in fact, the zoning that we were placed into in 2020 during COVID, if we were placed into a zone at that point that took, at the future value from the land? That's what I'm trying to say. The restriction, the restriction of the usage is going to have an effect on the.
We're not further restricting the use of land. So if you have land with development potential now, so say you have a piece of property that is zone C2 now, but doesn't have anything on it, we're not going to rezone it to open space. It will continue to have the same development potential that it has now. It might have a slightly different name or slightly different overlay. I don't believe there's a single parcel that is being rezoned to something that would take away somebody's future development.
There is not. As a matter of fact, in relation to the open space zone, that is really a new zone for new development. And I'll give you an example. Subdivisions often have common area. And sometimes that common area is set aside for, for environmental protection. Maybe there's, you know, critical habitat on site, you know, archaeological resources. Whatever the case may be, we identify a piece of property within a subdivision that cannot be developed. We currently have this crazy combination of zoning that identifies that parcel as being kind of a, don't touch this, you can't divide it, you can't develop it. And that is a combination of REC X E P. It's very confusing and you have to like search through code to figure out what that means. It's not obvious. So in place of that, we created an open space zone and that is actually fulfilling a general plan implementation measure and policy as well. So we're not going to just take your property and just slap an open space designation on it. That's not what this is about. It is a new zone for future development and the parcels that are currently zoned REC X E P will be rezoned open space, but they're already restricted as defined in the open space zone anyway.
I wanted to, I think the citizen is raising a good point. Earlier we were talking about, well, if you had a conditional use permit, you're not going to use, leave, lose that ability if you keep the use going. But the question is, another question is, if current zoning, the current zoning for a property gives you a right to do something, even if you're not doing it right now, will any of the rezoning that we are contemplating take away that right for the current owner?
For existing uses? No.
For existing permitted uses?
No. Would it take away future development potential? Because we're not down zoning properties to something that has now. But the very specifics of it could change slightly as the definitions of some of those uses change. So if you have a RR parcel, I'm not, I don't, haven't memorized exactly what's. So it's very possible that an under existing RR, the description of those accessory uses might change minimally. But I would say, based on what I've seen so far, if anything, you would be gaining flexibility as opposed to losing flexibility.
And that's the intent, is to kind of pull out all of the stumbling blocks and the confusion that we currently experience in code and simplify it and make it easier to use.
But if, if for some reason we mess up.
Oh, yeah.
Hang on, hang on. And if I'm not clarifying what you're asking.
You are, you are point on.
Okay. If we mess up and something gets rezoned, that under the terms of the new zoning category, something, a right that existed before would no longer exist. Is there, the current owner would not be affected by that, correct?
Or future owner.
Oh, and that's, that's next step. So really, are we saying that if we do mess up and we're taking away a right, that at least on its face, we're taking away a right that existed before? We're not really effectively doing that?
No, so if you don't, if you don't, aren't actively engaged in a specific use that is somewhere, somehow going to change through this process, you don't secure your right to the previous code allowances?
What we're saying is the change.
And that's exactly contrary, no.
What I'm trying to get at.
That's exactly it.
So if you have a vacant piece of property, and this is to the extreme because this isn't happening. But if you have a vacant piece of property and right now you have, well, this probably is not a good example, so I shouldn't go down the road. We'll use the RM zone as a prime example.
Use the vacant piece of property.
Well, no, because I was going to say a single family residence would be allowed and then not allowed. You would no longer be allowed to have a single family residence. But that's a really poor example, so I don't really want to use it.
I mean, what about parcels that are zoned, you know, for eight units and?
No, so those, those changes are not occurring. So those change, those, those uses are allowed in your base zone. Okay, there's only two base zones that are changing. And that is RC, which is redundant with the current C1 designation, and RM, which is rural home industry. And the RM zone doesn't allow you anything except the right to apply for a conditional use permit. And we have rolled in provisions to still allow that particular process to occur without the base zone of RM. So when you're talking about land use, we're not changing anything because your rural residential zone is still rural residential. Your A1 parcel, zoned parcel is still A1. Those things are not changing. But what Michelle is trying to explain is that, that the code itself is being restructured and there may be some very subtle changes that are made in the individual use zones or zone districts that may have an effect on what you want to do. And I'll use animal keeping as an example. Right now, there's no real clear indication of what you can do as far as livestock. We've got our primary livestock resource zones that allow livestock production and those are commercial agricultural operations. Right now, we've got something called accepted farming practices that allows you to have livestock with no restriction of numbers and you can have them on a small parcel that's zoned R1, single family residential in a residential neighborhood. We have proposed some changes in that respect and some other very subtle changes that may or may not affect you. But, but the zoning itself is not being changed.
But if, if, given your, your animal situation. Say somebody has 10 sheep on one acre, which would be disastrous. But they do currently. And we put in a requirement that they, they're limited to five sheep on one acre. That right would be affected by that change. Is that correct?
No, so those existing uses can continue. I'm not sure how you would go about establishing.
Just a second. Okay, so no, that, that wouldn't change. Currently, you could have 10 sheep, but you don't have 10 sheep on that one acre. And you want to have 10 sheep.
Subsequent to the code change, if it was not a pre-existing established use, you have to comply with the new code.
So you have to put everything into play now?
No. No.
Well, no, that's what she just said. If it was established, existing use.
Why don't you just tell us what your zoning is and then we can talk?
No, I'm worried about, I'm worried about an oversight that restricts the value of these parcels, whether they're large parcels or small parcels.
Can you give us an example of the kind of thing that you're concerned about? And then we can tell you whether or not that's the kind of thing that could be affected.
Oh, okay. We have 40 acres. We have a lot in San Andreas, it's zoned for eight units. We have other parcels throughout the county that we might like to build on. We might like to put rental units on those, on those parcels. The problem is that at this point, the way California is treating landlords and the restrictions that are on how a landlord has to deal with tenants and the loss of the value in having residential units, we don't know if we want to do that in California. So that's my question is, if we are in fact guiding the county down some channels, which we are, are we, all I'm asking you is, are you taking into consideration the loss of value in the existing possibility for the usage?
We are not changing the density allowed of development on your parcels that are zoned to allow residential development.
Right. That is all dictated through the general plan.
Today, you will be allowed at least eight units in the future because the direction that California is going actually is to allow higher density.
Yes, higher density with way more restrictions. And thank you very much. So I mean, that's, that's beyond the scope, but I do appreciate your time.
But we're not going to take away density that you're allowed today. I can't think of any.
No, because the general plan dictates density and this is not an amendment to the general plan. It is just an amendment to the zoning code and the specific regulations concerning.
But state law is state law.
Correct. Absolutely.
So Gina, I have, I have a question. Just a clarification. With the RC and RM, you said that was tied to the land unless, and if, so if the previous, I purchased a piece of property with this zoning and continued doing what the previous owner did, I would be allowed to do that unless I stop for 12 months? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, that's, that's, I think, an important distinction. So everyone would get to do, to, would be allowed to continue doing what the previous owner did as long as it wasn't a break?
Yes.
Okay.
Hi. Hi Gina, nice to see you again. My name is Morgan Skrybik. I'm a commercial property owner in the county. And let me start with the first easy question. Talked about the map. I tried to, you know, I read other documents online, save the trees and the paperwork. Appreciate that, FAQs and such. Is there any plans and has the map for the proposed zoning changes been posted online? And if not, where would be for public preview?
Yeah, so the, the public portal is currently up and running. It has been. If you have, and it's actually located in two different spots on the county planning homepage. So if you have any problems navigating that, since you're here at Government Center, just hop on over to the department and have the folks in the department walk you through it and they can tell you exactly what the proposed change is, if any. So we have to remember that not every parcel in the county is proposed to change. There's just a, a small number of them that would change as a result of this. And even, even though we've, we've continued to go through and review parcels as we're fielding phone calls and as we think that we have inaccurately identified parcels for a change, we're making those changes now. So I'm already putting together a list of, of changes as we speak. And not all the properties that have initially been identified as being changed will be changed. Primarily, you'll see those in the PD overlay zone. That seems to be the real problem because of the two different types of regulation that's in place.
So once they go to the planning homepage, what, what are you looking for to get the map of the proposed zoning?
So to my point, just a little clarify. It said that if you wanted to review the map, you needed to come into the planning department to view it. So what I was asking is.
You can get it online.
Can I get it online? Because there isn't, there last time I checked, which was like about a week ago. And that's all I know.
Right.
All right, great, thank you. And more specifically, and hate to beat the bad horse as they say.
The site up and show that to everybody.
See if I know how to do this.
While you ask your next question.
Yeah, but my question again is related to our speaker's comments around prior use and specifically more, more specifically to the overlays wherein you're stating that plan development will be changing to DR, okay?
Unless it's an actual plan development. So there, there are actual plan development projects out there.
Correct. So my parcel is currently, so you want to be specific, it's an M1-PD. So what I'm hearing is proposed to change and potentially the change to an M1-DR, design review. Your commentary relative to, we will not lose any prior rights. Let me just read this legal description of what a PD overlay means. PD zoning district is intended to promote creativity in building design, flexibility in primitive land uses and innovation in development concepts. So my concerns are more around design review. And if it goes to that code change in those circumstances, does that mean we're going to have more restrictions beyond what the prior designation of PD was?
No. So my, my task currently is to go through all of the PD zonings and identify which zoning was in place specifically as a planned unit development versus design review. And that's what I'm trying to distinguish now. So there are those that I initially put on the list to be zoned DR that are actually in fact a true planned unit development. And there's a whole research project that goes along with identifying those. And as I said before, I'm pulling historic records and I'm trying to identify those currently. And so far I've come up with what I think is a good solid list of changes that actually don't result in any change at all. So if you have some specific concerns, reach out to me directly. And if you think that your parcel is proposed to be changed and it's an inaccurate change, then certainly we'll have that discussion. I'll do the research and we'll determine what, what your property, whether it was an actual planned unit development or whether it was in place in fact for design review.
Okay, great. So I think, I think you just answered my question, which is, PD would really be more specific to plan development, meaning multiple dwelling units, whatever. Whatever, shopping center, strip mall, yes.
The properties were zoned with a PD combining zone as a result of a, an approved development. So condominium projects, townhome projects, mixed use projects. I'll use the arbors up in Murphy's as an example. That's a condominium project with mixed use. There was some flexibility used in the, in the decision making of that particular project and it is zoned with a PD combining zone for the purpose of a planned unit development for the condominiums.
Yeah, so if you're following my train of thought, M1 is small manufacturing. Dash PD is not specific to housing, right? It's a manufacturing zone, right? So I'm just trying to get that clarification.
It's just often used in housing to transfer density around and allow smaller and larger parcels.
Okay, great, thank you, appreciate it.
So while we've got this up on the web now, since you're concerned about where to go to find the map, so this is the planning homepage of the county website. And I'll just scroll up to the top so it looks a little more familiar. So when you get here, this is what you're going to view. Calvers County Planning. You can find all of this information in two different places. One, you can go to this link here on the far right at the top says zoning. If you, uh, select the, on the dropdown, the zoning code update, it brings you to another page. The, uh, link for the portal is located here. And you can, uh, input or search your parcel by either a Sessor parcel number or by address. And all of these parcels, um, in red are, um, proposed to be changed. So, um, I encourage everyone to get on and take a look and see whether or not, um, uh, what your parcel is proposed. If you received a letter from us, then that means that you're one of these red parcels. If you did not, then there is no proposed change and you've got nothing to be concerned about in place in terms of, uh, your property zoning actually changing. So, um, another place that you can find it is down here under, um, whoops. I got off the planning page. Let's go back. Um, another location is on the homepage. Down here under what's new, we've got the, uh, the portal for the, the zoning identification map. And then we've got the draft code that everyone is taking copies of. Um, it is right here for everyone to view it online. Okay.
Hi, I'm Kim Rainey.
I'm Misty Costa.
Uh, we live down off of Milton and Emile. Um, and so our, our little community is kind of all redded. Um, and so what we have concerns about is we've zoned RRX. First, we can't really find anything for what the X means. Um, and then we, you know, but we didn't get any notice and we've Google searched and we've done everything. And so we have wanted to kind of know what that means. Um, second, I think we both, uh, moved out to the country about five, I've got five years ago, about three years ago. Um, and we specifically chose this area because we have, uh, animals in general. Uh, we are a mini pig sanctuary and rescue educational. Um, and so we work with Calvers County, all the counties around here, um, to help save mini pigs. Um, and so we still have some concerns about your animal sanctuaries, being defined in animal keeping. Um, and so we, we really can't be here for six hours sessions and I appreciate that you guys can, um, as well as multiple days. So I was wondering as a community, first for the RF, RF exit. Secondly is, is there a way to kind of make it easier for the community to, to dive into the portions that they are interested in versus kind of the entire thing? Um, not, not to sound like narcissistic or anything, but, um, you know, everyone has jobs and so.
Absolutely.
If we could kind of define in those.
Well, yeah, I had to get your questions first.
Right. We would like to participate, but I, if I could do a couple of days, you know, I, I work for the school district as well. So taking time off is, you know, not the easiest. Um, but that, I think that's my question. Um, and the same with Misty, you know, is, uh, the definition of animal keeping and things like that because of where we live and, and what we're choosing to do. And Misty does FFA.
We, we breed sheep and goats for, for, for H and FFA and actually currently we're lambing. So being home would be good.
So, so that, I think that's, that's kind of our concerns, right? We, we, we want to keep it rural and kind of keep doing what we're doing and providing a good service on both our parts.
Yes. So, um, in regard to.
RRX was.
Yeah. So, so the RR base zone again is not changing.
Okay.
Um, but what will change is the X overlay zone. And what that X means is in, in short term is no further land division. Um, so you're actually, your general plan dictates your minimum parcel size through, um, population density and building intensity as well as, you know, um, uh, public water and public sewer availability. All plays in as all criteria as to, um, your minimum parcel size allowances. So it doesn't make any sense to kind of have over, you know, combining regulations when, um, the density itself and minimum parcel size is like I said dictated through the county general plan. So, um.
Exists in the case of the RR.
So if I understand correctly, I understand, I'll mirror it back, is since we're already split into like five and 10 acre lots, they will stay, that, that's kind of what it is?
So it will depend on a, on a case by case basis. It depends on your land use designation, your availability of public water and sewer, uh, as well as, um, uh, well, not necessarily surrounding areas, but infrastructure is very important. So, um, for the most part, on, on my, with my initial review, the majority of parcels that are zoned with an X overlay zone cannot be subdivided anyway. Um, the general plan has restricted those parcels to the current parcel size. So if you have concerns as to whether or not your parcel is subdividable, you can contact me and we'll go ahead and go through it. But for the most part, it doesn't, well, it doesn't make any changes to your base zone. It only reflects whether or not your parcel has the ability to be divided.
So it doesn't change if your question is regarding keeping the animals, it doesn't change your ability to.
Right. However. What is proposed to be changed is the new definition of animal keeping.
Right.
And, um, we've been doing this in our staff, um, for multiple people that reach out to us. Give me a call, send me an email and I will go ahead and run through this code and I will pull out the parts that I think are relevant to you.
Okay.
And then that'll give you an opportunity to review it and, you know, be honest. How is that going to affect you? Because that's what this process is all about.
Perfect.
We need to know how our proposed changes will affect people. And if it is a significant impact, then maybe we need to think about how we've drafted that section. And so this is not the final document. Um, but yeah, certainly reach out to me and I will, like I said, I will email you the relevant parts so you don't have to sift through the whole darn thing.
Thank you.
Because it is a lot of information to take in and it can be intimidating for those who aren't accustomed to reviewing and working with.
And you might well want to raise the question of if the document says so many pigs.
Yeah.
Maybe it should have something about mini pigs.
Correct.
Very different. Right, very different.
Luckily to be one of the quirky ones because you're doing something that's not the mainstream use, but you are already doing it. So our intention is not to take away from you anything you are already doing.
And I must say, if anyone is interested in adopting a mini pig. BigLoveCo.org.
And there's no way to search what these ladies are asking. Is there a way to search the document for a specific?
Yes, uh, you can do, um, uh, you can open up the document, um, you know, I'm not sure if you can do that with a PDF. Uh, well, I certainly use the control functions with a Word document, um, but, um.
Should work in a PDF depending on what PDF reader somebody.
You're using, correct.
Yeah. So you can search, you can search terms, um, certainly. And, um, you know, it will pop up. But again, you know, to save you some time, just reach out to me or anyone else in our department and, you know, we'll have a discussion about what your concerns are. We'll go through the code, pull out those relevant sections and send them to you for your review. And then I, I encourage everyone just to simply put their concerns and comments in writing because that's how we're going to sift through this whole process in the end.
Great. And what, what was your name?
Gina.
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 You have the contact.
I'm, my name's plastered all over all this stuff.
Excellent.
And then, um, with the numbers, I know, is that the, the part that to message you about?
The number of animals.
Yeah, the number of animals. Yep.
Yeah, so.
One of the things we're going to be discussing when we get to the RR zoning and the animal keeping definition.
And we can email you and you can kind of give us a general date when that's going to be occurring.
Uh, that might be a little difficult, but I can certainly tell you what kind of progress we're making through this. Um, and you know, I, I know that you're both working, but you can also view it online. But just because you're not participating in the study session doesn't mean that your concerns are not.
Being addressed by email.
Being addressed. So that's where, you know, we are going to offer some office hours. We haven't established when those are going to be yet, but we will be doing kind of, um, some open office hours for people to be able to zoom in or call in and get some specific information. Um, but we are always taking phone calls and emails and working with people at the counter. So this is not the only opportunity for you to ask questions or voice any concerns.
Okay.
Thank you guys. We appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thanks for what you do.
First off, thank you Gina for inviting me this morning. I was, uh, I emailed her at, um, 2:30 AM. With an issue that came up and, and she responded probably seven something AM this morning telling me that there's a meeting today. I generally stay out of these things. Um, I'm comfortable. But, uh, but coming to the meeting, I have another meeting at one o'clock, so I have a little bit of extra time today. And, um, I'm dressed for that meeting, not for this meeting. Um, domestic animals, you need to further clarify, expand on one animal unit. A cameraman will know what an animal unit is. Somebody that, that has, that has, you know, I'm a pescatarian. I don't really get into this stuff, but will know what an animal unit is. But, uh, a layperson or a gentleman farmer, somebody that's just decides they, um, they want to keep their grass down, fire prevention, won't know what an animal unit is. And, um, I can't explain it without saying it in very layman terms, but, uh, a calf and the calf's mother is one animal unit. Uh, an adult, uh, bull would be an animal unit. It's based on weight, not on, not on, um, not on one being, one, uh, mammal. So you need to further clarify that in this. And I accidentally came across this. I probably could go through your whole document and accidentally come across many things, but I trust Gina. And if a problem comes up after the fact, after you guys make this, uh, uh, you know, after the county adopts this, then you'll hear from me.
We'd like to not have to come back and do cleanup, so.
Well, you know, my services aren't free. Um, I'm going to speak to you about something, uh, which we're not on right now, but needs to be talked about. And that is, I just got a email from Mr. Mfassino and I don't see him here today, but I wish he was here, um, regarding this. Uh, last night, uh, I was looking around and my new neighbor put a, uh, turned on the light that was blinding. And they're on a little five acre parcel down there and I'm way up on the hill over thousands of feet away. And, um, I said, well, well, let's talk light trespass here. And, you know, we don't have an ordinance. I've waited over 20 years for a, uh, for Calvers County to have a dark skies ordinance. I've never seen it. It's never come forward because we've had, we've, we've been redirected to other issues in the county. Um, so.
It's on the list of ordinance.
It is on the list of ordinance.
Well.
And it is something.
This.
Actually, we've, we've rolled in some new regulation into the lighting section, which is under the next section for review under countywide regulations. Whether or not that's going to, you know, be sufficient, um, we'll have that discussion when it comes up. And if we need to modify it, um, then that's, this is the time to do it. So.
Um, also you're going to need a noise ordinance. I haven't, I haven't looked at your documents yet.
Noise ordinance is already in place. That's rolled into Title Rule Eight. I believe it's, it's under the jurisdiction of the Sheriff's Department.
Yeah, we have, we have an existing.
Okay, I'll take, I'll take a look at that. And I have no problems with noise right now. Uh, since I got the new neighbors, they have little children and everybody's on their best behavior. Um. Uh, yes, so the light ordinance, what I would ask is for the ordinance to not allow, especially a light ordinance, to not allow, um, grandfathering in of, uh, existing, existing lights, which is, you know, uh, the, that's where the problem lies. People have been waiting for this. They, uh, they know where the issue is. They made complaints to the county. It's already documented. So where it's already documented, you, you should make sure that, uh, that those people, uh, have their, have their, um, have their voices heard and the county takes action to help them. Okay, so somebody turned on the light last night. Well, we're already working on that light ordinance and, uh, it should have gone into effect the moment, uh, you started working on it, not, not after the fact. All right?
Is there anything else?
Um, if you'd like, is that your new nickname? Spooky?
I guess it can also be bewitched.
So, yeah, I just. I'll keep it, I'll keep it there for the remainder of your time on this, uh, commission, if you don't mind. I like it. It's very fitting. It's good to, uh, meet the new people. Um, you don't need my name. Brown app, as you know, Ms., uh, Julie Moss Lewis. We don't do that.
Thank you.
Yeah, that was my, I, I, I made sure they, they stopped that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Having heard what you said and I appreciate your position, however, I would like to reiterate that we have been in Calvers County for many, many generations without light ordinances, without noise ordinances and without all of the input that has come up from the valley up to us. And it's called being a good neighbor. So while you're making all the rules that you have to make, and I understand that, please keep in mind that there, people do have common sense and we are good people up here. And every time we overlay common sense with some rule, we keep someone from being able to exercise their rights. So just, I, I just want to say that in contradiction to let you know that there are others, there are other opinions as well.
Thank you.
My name is Paula Fox and I got a letter from you that my parcel was going to change. So, or something needed to be changed. And I'm in West Point at Stanley and Rabbit Foot Road. And, uh, I'm in section, I mean, district RR Rural Residential. And.
Are you RRX?
No, RR Rural Residential.
I got, did we speak?
Yes, I think so. Yeah.
Yeah, it's RRX.
Well, it was RR when I bought it in 2005.
Yeah, so Rural Residential is the base zone. Um, the X is, um, a, an overlay zone. So all your, all your permitted and conditionally permitted uses are dictated through the base zone, which is not changing. So what's proposed to be changed in, in your particular case is the, um, X overlay, which is a reference to existing parcel size. And if I recall correctly, you have a five acre parcel.
5.01.
Yeah. So your parcel is not divisible anyway, so it doesn't make any practical sense to have an overlay, uh, zone that prevents you from doing something that the general plan already does.
So since I got this letter, I, I wanted to have an understanding that nothing's going to change with, in my situation before.
So again, as the, as we've discussed, um, with previous, um, comments about, uh, the zone districts in, we are proposing some minor changes, um, through the, through the use classifications of each one of these zone districts. Most will not be significant at all if you can even identify a change. Um, but there will be some nuances that will, that may affect you. And you and I had that discussion about the animal keeping.
For, for example.
Animal keeping would be, uh, an example that is specific to you.
Well, I mean, I guess when we moved there, we took two horses that were down the street because the house was going to be foreclosed on and the people there were sixty something year old drug addicts. And my, my husband and I talked about it because it's been an expense. I mean, I work part-time for Alpha, frankly.
You do.
It's, it's, if you have a situation like that, I mean, and horses are abandoned, does the county do anything about it? Or they die in the, on the property? How does that work?
So again, um, the uses that are, um, the changes that are proposed will affect land use moving forward. If you have an existing lawful use of your land, the amendment of this code will not change what you're currently doing.
Well, I guess why was I targeted where I live? Why was I targeted?
Well, you're not specifically targeted. So those letters went out to every parcel in the county that was proposed to be changed. And, and that, that you're one of 5,000 people that is, is subject to change. But the change that we're talking about in relative to your zoning is not, is not specific to the base zone and the allowances allowed in the base zone. That is part of the amendment that is proposed with the, the code update. Well.
Let me explain how you got the X in the first place in most cases. So historically what happened is you would have an area of the county and the general plan would have. and the general plan would have suggested that the zoning of those parcels would be RR 10, say. But maybe a parcel existed within that area that was 5.01 acres. So instead of calling it RR 10 at the time and then saying, "But this is a, a pre-existing, non-conforming parcel." The X was added to say that there's no potential to further subdivide this. It would be even true in an RR 5 zone, because there's no potential to further subdivide that parcel into a smaller parcel. So that, that's your case, that's what your RR X is. So what we're proposing to do now is remove the X, because there's no need for the X. You can't subdivide that parcel further anyway.
Well, I just, I guess when you get these things, it's a little alarming, because I wanted to leave here, you know, feeling like I don't have to worry about it.
You don't have to.
You know, because I'm on the, I'm on the corner of Rabbit Foot, so, but my property extends over Stanley. I'm right in this corner. So obviously, you know, the county took over, I mean easements, so people can get to their property. So that's, and then there's a parcel across the street I own part of. But two other neighbors own part of it, and it's never gonna be built on. That's what the former owner said. But these other neighbors took a chance on buying a strip of it in case you guys wanted to, uh, you know, take it over to do something, and then they thought, I guess they're gonna make a couple bucks on it. But I just, I own, the Rabbit Foot Road is an easement on my property in front of my house. I own part of the parcel across the street. And then, um, you know, Stanley and that little bit of Rabbit Foot where there's other neighbors, um, I own the property around where that street is too, so it's a little complicated. But I mean, it's not something that you're gonna sell and have somebody live on or, or extend, uh, uh, any horses over there. And that, I mean, it's just, part of it's just like a gully for trapping, uh, floodwater, you know?
Right.
But, but it's on my parcel.
Nothing that is being contemplated currently is going to change your basic zoning and the, the traditional uses that were allowed within that zoning. The only changes that could happen would be subtle nuances. So you're talking about horses. So let's say that on five acres, we end up with something about animal keeping that says you're limited to some number of horses.
Mm-hmm.
We're not gonna come and take horses away that you already have there, but you wouldn't be able to expand that activity.
Well, I don't need to expand it, but if you guys take them, you gotta feed them. They can't go to the, you know.
Yeah, and if you go rest.
Get destroyed.
From your neighbor that is starving. I don't believe that any of us are interested in coming out there and telling.
Right, well, and that happens.
To starve.
You know, well, we're pretty much animal people, my husband and I, you know.
Good for you.
And, and frankly, the farrier said, "If you wanted to try to rehome, nobody wants these horses." Like, we have to take care of them for the duration.
Sure.
You know, and, uh, so, but I, I just wanted, you know, to be clear, so once I got this letter, I, you know, I came here so I don't have to have a bunch of questions coming home. It's like, you know, pretty clear, we can just go on with our.
Doing.
And we don't have any neighbors that complain about anything, and, and this miniature donkey we have, when she goes, she goes off right before dinnertime, you know, to remind me and get out there, or Dan to get out there. But, you know, we have mountain lions and so forth, and they really love sugar, because anytime that cat's around, she has a loud bray, but a panicked loud bray. And so they have, you know, you could check with them, nobody has a problem with it, and then they run out to check their livestock. So she's very beloved in, in the neighborhood, you know.
So she'll get to stay.
Have we alleviated your concerns?
Yeah, I can, I can go home and not worry about this, but my, my neighbor, I don't, I didn't see him today, but, uh, they have four acres, you know, right next to me, and I, I don't know what questions they had exactly, but, you know. If I could share, if I could take one of these to share with them, you know.
Take one, and if they have questions specifically about their parcel, they can contact Gina individually.
Oh, yeah, good.
We're not gonna be able to, to talk to whatever 300 people individually. We were hoping that, that we'll get out that we're not trying to change anyone's, but we do wanna make sure that people who took the time to be here today have the opportunity to bring up their question.
Well, I, I appreciate that, just because I know next door got the letter, I got the letter. I have one more neighbor across the way that I haven't checked with Wayne yet, but he might have got a, a letter as well, just so, I, we don't wanna, I mean, the letter was surprising enough. I just wanted to clear that up, you know? So I appreciate being here today, and, um.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll sleep well tonight, thank you.
And thank you for the horse care.
Yes, yes. Come on out.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, so I have a just quick question, um, about the special events and stuff like that. Would this be a proper time to kind of bring up that little nugget of stuff? I know we have that.
I don't think we're gonna have a, an in-depth discussion of the special event issue right now, because that's gonna come up later.
Right.
But go ahead and bring up your question.
Well, I'm just, if we were gonna make some changes during the, would this be a proper time?
We're not discussing it right now. We're gonna go through this thing one.
Well, later on, like, would be the proper time to, like, make our changes, the public talk, and kind of discuss what we're not discussing, but.
When we get to the special.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the special event, uh, section would be under, um, uh, the, uh, standards for specific uses. So as soon as we roll through the, um, um, the use allowances, which includes the base zones and the overlay zones, then that section will be next. Um, I encourage you to go through and, um, and read that section. For the most part, I mean, there are some very slight changes to it, but for the most part, it's been carried over in its entirety from current code. The, any major revisions to that section are going to be, um, done subsequent to this. It's a, it's a very sensitive and even controversial subject.
Right, right, and we know that from previous ones, so.
Right, right.
I was just wondering if we had a special meeting for that specific.
There, there will be.
Okay.
After this adoption, so that's gonna be done in a separate ordinance.
Gotcha.
Um, we're, you know, we're reviewing those options right now, but, but in order to keep this process moving forward at a fairly, you know, decent pace, we, um, we've chosen to, um, to pull out certain items that we know need to be considered, um, to be updated. Um, but we're, but because of the nature of the, um, of the subject, we're choosing to do those separately.
Okay.
Um, like I said, just so we can run through this process.
Yeah.
At a much, uh, um.
No, I fully appreciate that, because then it gives its own time to really get in depth and get through the weeds.
There's gonna be a lot of discussion, and there's a lot of analysis that needs to happen, and it's going to bring in, I'm certain, a lot of individuals throughout the, uh, county. So we just felt it was necessary, um, to be able to dive into that particular topic by itself.
Perfect.
Yep, but, but read this, what is impacted here.
Yeah.
Send in your comments or come back.
Okay, so we will have a special meeting for it, that's all I.
Yes.
It's gonna, it's gonna be a continuation of our current meetings.
Exactly.
Okay.
No.
No.
No, there's two different things going on. There are some references to special events.
Pieces.
No, 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 I'm talking about the, it's special meeting.
But what we do, the wholesale ordinance review for, specifically for special events, it will not be a continuance of this meeting, it will be a wholesale.
Special meeting, okay. And then we'll get noticed, notified for that too, as well, for all the people that were on that first meeting that we had, um, a couple months back, of the special events and the wedding thing that happened and all that.
When the, the specific project was reviewed.
Well, there will be notice, uh, in accordance with, um, state law.
Okay.
So, um, there will not be individual property owner notice, because this would be an amendment to code.
Gotcha.
Which affects the entire county, and because of the numbers of people and the type of project, the, um, legal requirement for notification is, uh, is basically a, a, a large notice in the local newspaper in addition to some posting. So all of that information will be posted on the county website when it comes up. So just be vigilant, um, that's all I can do, is encourage people to keep, uh, keep an eye on the, on the planning page, because anytime we've got updates, notices, anything we want you to be aware of, we're gonna post it there. Um, and, uh, you know, just word of mouth as well, um, you know, keep in contact with your supervisor or maybe your planning commissioner, or feel free to call us.
You can sign up for emails.
Absolutely, yeah, there's a section, um, on our, um, county, um, on our homepage that you can actually sign up for notification, and, um, all of those notices that we're talking about will go out as an email blast to everyone that is on that list. Currently, we've got over 700 email addresses on that email address, uh, notification list.
Perfect.
If you go to Calhoun County Meetings, uh, Google, right, and go to Planning Commission, you can see what's set.
Right.
Right, for the next.
The whole calendar and stuff like that, oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Getting on that notification list is probably the best thing. That way you don't have to sit there and, "Oh gee, I think I wanna look at the planning page today." You know, that way you'll get notices. But most, you know, you might be getting things that you don't really care about, but, you know, um, they'll be sent to you. You can read through them, and whatever is, you know, uh, relevant to you, then certainly you'll have an opportunity to participate.
Perfect, all right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right.
Come on out.
Chris Niebergin, Mo Kill. I've read this, animal keeping. In McCollum Hill, for decades before the planning department even existed, uh, we, we have animals in our community. It's very common, we raise our children and our grandchildren riding horses down the street, uh, raising animals. If we wanted these kind of restrictions on our property owner rights, we would have put them in this document, which is our instructions to our employees.
So I'm gonna ask you to hang on to those thoughts, um, and if you're able to. And while we are talking about animal keeping in detail, then you come back up and talk to us about it.
Uh, I'll have to go make money to pay for all this.
So, so Chris?
Sure, yeah.
I encourage you to, um, now that you've read that section, if you've got concerns over it, absolutely, put those in writing for us, send me an email, because we are keeping track of everyone's comments, and those are all gonna be taken into consideration prior to us actually preparing, uh, the, the, um, the final draft for consideration. So these are the kinds of things that we need to know how the community feels about. Um, you know, they may sound good to us on paper, um, but how they actually affect people, we need that feedback. We need to know how everybody, um, feels about this stuff, how it's going to impact you on your property and your neighborhoods. So this is the kind of feedback that we're looking for.
Right, and so it's specific to each different zone, how much animal keeping is going to be restricted or not restricted.
Right.
It, it's a bigger topic than just a couple minutes right this second.
Thank you.
Anybody else who wants to bring up something, just to make sure that it's, they get to say something today? Well, you're gonna have more opportunities today, but make sure, okay.
We, we have someone online that would like to speak.
Sure.
Good morning, this is Tom M. Fasino with the Calhoun County Planning Coalition. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, um, as you know, the zoning ordinance is being updated in three parts. The district rules have been available for review this past month. In summary, we wanna make sure at the CPC that you first, that the code update makes all the 60-plus code improvements called for in the general plan. So far, the district rules appear to cover about 22 of those, and the, um, countywide regulations were, there're gonna be another 11 of those covered. What I guess what I'm trying to say is, don't stop. There are other parts of the code that need to be amended. Uh, please continue this process after you do the zoning code update. The second thing we wanna make sure is that the project review processes will be open, inclusive, and responsive. Please inclusively involve as early as possible all those with legitimate interests and concerns regarding project applications. The third thing is, we want you to please make sure that the code conforms to requirements of state and federal law. So far, it appears that the draft district rules cover about 13 of the 21 issues of state or federal concern. Uh, in the email we sent you yesterday, there's a chart, um, identifying those. Also, please make sure that the, uh, controversial uses are not concentrated into a nuisance. One rural residential neighbor with an event center operating every other weekend is an inconvenience. Twenty-four rural residential neighbors with event centers are a disaster in the making. Also, please make sure that the code includes clear and quantitative standards. Please consider including optional standards for applicants seeking simplified secret review. For an explanation of this, see the final attachment to yesterday's email. Please make sure that code enforcement is meaningful. The conflict resolution is part of both project review and code enforcement. That the code is user-friendly, and finally, that each zoning district meets the needs of people in the 21st century, a century in which this county is likely to be drier, even more prone to wildfire, and at greater risk of losing sense of species habitat. As you review the draft district rules, please ask yourself, will the code help the future to get what it needs in each district? Uh, for a more detailed assessment of the district rules, I encourage you to read the letter we sent yesterday. As this proof process moves forward, we at the CPC will try to suggest edits to the draft code sections to address both our concerns and your concerns. Thank you for this continuing opportunity to participate. Do you have any questions of me at this point?
I have, uh, this is Tim Ladish. You mentioned the, the requirements of the general plan that have not yet been recognized in this. Have you listed those in your, uh, in your email from yesterday?
Right, there's a chart, and staff has, um, at the end of your packet today, you'll see staff has included a similar chart. And so, um, it, that's been very helpful, because, uh, 11 of the ones that, uh, code improvements will be done at the later stages of this process at the countywide regulations. But there's still about 20 or so that aren't part of this zoning code update package. And I guess what I'm hoping is that after you're done with the zoning code update package, you'll not stop. You'll keep going. Maybe, I don't know whether you wanna hire the same consultant or a different consultant, but don't stop making those changes that are required by the general plan.
Uh, Mr. Fasino, uh, this is Gabriel Elliott, Director of Planning. So if I'm hearing you correctly, you are not only referring to the zoning code, which is Chapter 17, you are referring to other chapters of the code that is not zoning, is that correct?
Well, I wish I could give you a straight answer to that question. The general plan, some places says zoning code amendment. Other places it just says code amendment, and is not specific. Whether you choose to put those in the zoning code or somewhere else, you know, that's at your discretion and professional judgment, we're not questioning that. We just want to make sure that that, the process doesn't stop before all of those are in place. As you know, the, the, uh, we mentioned earlier, Chapter Nine deals with the noise ordinance. That's supposed to get updated. Let's not drop that process, you know? We know that the, uh, uh, changes to, um, standards for, uh, uh, water runoff are to be updated. Let's not drop that process, part of the process. I guess the reason I bring this up is that in other counties, I've seen them go through the zoning code update process and stop. And, um, just because you fix the zoning code doesn't necessarily mean you've removed all the barriers that you wanna remove, um, uh, to, uh, economic development and re- research conservation in the county.
Thank you.
Okay, so is there anybody else that has a specific question that they need to get answered because they won't be able to stay all day or won't be able to be back? Just wanna make sure we get to your topics. Okay, now I'd like to go back to our regularly scheduled.
I don't know if the chat, or it looks like there were three people there in the chat. Is that something that Annette can?
Show us.
Show us?
Yeah, she's, she's been monitoring those chats, and I think some of those comments came from Mr. M. Fasino.
Okay, okay.
Are there other comments besides those from Tom?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
So I think we were just going to get started on talking about use allowances in my zone in case anybody lost track of where they were at.
But no, I appreciate the time that we've taken to address people's immediate concerns.
Right. We want, we know everybody can't hang out here for six weeks.
No, that's, that's a little much to ask. That's why we're trying to reach out to folks as much as we can and being, you know, trying to be as helpful as we can and offering to, you know, cut sections of the draft out and email it to folks and have that conversation. So, you know, we're always willing to do that, understanding that not everyone can be here.
I appreciate that because it's disconcerting.
And the letter, even when it's talking about a very minor change disturbing.
Well, you hear the word change and it's concerning. You know, but that was part of our, you know, outreach to, to people to get them to start asking questions and get involved. And, you know, it might have scared folks a little bit, but I didn't know, didn't know how else to word it. So is what it is. Okay.
Take it away.
So you guys ready to dive into the?
Table. Table TBJ.
Are we going to just look at the tables then? And then discuss?
Martha, do you have a recommendation for how we want to go through this?
Um, I would, you know, you have a lot of options and you can do it how you want. You might say, okay, let's look at resource zones. And does anybody have comments on, on resource zones? Either the land use tables or the development standards? I don't know if anybody has notes that they've taken notes or anything that has already popped up at them that they want to discuss.
I think that approach would make sense to say, okay, we've got the tables for resource zones and land use regulations. Are there questions?
Well, and I would like the staff and consultant to point out anything that they think has changed and make sure that that's highlighted.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay. So Martha, certainly feel free to chime in at any time. So if we're looking at the table for land use regulations, resource zones, the first land use classification is residential uses. And I believe when you're talking about what's new, that would be employee housing in addition to supportive housing and transitional housing.
Which are primarily required.
Yes.
So that they resulted from state laws.
So everybody's figured out how this, how to, to read this document now, right?
I think it's important if anybody's trying to follow this.
So.
That, that in parentheses, when there's a number in parentheses.
Yeah. So we can run through that real quick.
Yeah.
So just so. Oh, we are on page 13.
Excuse me, Gina?
Yes.
We've had a request to put the document online.
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
Can we see Martha?
Martha, are you going to share?
Yeah, I was going to ask, would you like me to share?
That'd be great. Okay.
That'd be great.
And which screen am I sharing right now?
It looks like it's a split screen. So we are on page 13.
Okay, but it was the document?
Yes.
It was the document.
Okay, sorry. I, sometimes Zoom confounds me. So here are the land use tables for the resource zones. And I think Gina started with, first, there's the group of residential uses. And again, basically existing allowances carried forward with the addition of uses that are kind of required to be allowed per state law. And that includes the employee housing as well as the supportive transition and family daycare. And the public and semi-public uses, generally, these are existing allowances carried forward. As you, as somebody pointed out, these numbers in parentheses relate to notes at the end of the tables. So that number one on the cemeteries relates to that in the A1 and AP zones, private burial lots, plots, or solely the interim of property owners and members of the household just require an administrative use permit, whereas public cemeteries in the A1 zone would require a conditional use permit. That seems like kind of this interesting nuance, and that is an example of an existing allowance carried forward. So, yeah, anytime you see the numbers, they relate to notes at the end of the table. If we go on to, any questions on those at this point? Just interrupt me. The next set, group of uses are commercial uses. And again, the existing, generally, the existing allowances carried forward, the commercial uses in these resource zones are really related to more of the animal or agricultural type related uses, like equestrian facilities, hunting and fishing clubs, outdoor sports and recreation. And there are allowances for tasting rooms. That was something we mentioned that is a new use. And again, that note relates to the, some limitations on the tasting rooms and that there needs to be accessory to a farm. And it gives kind of that information for that because really, the idea of allowing tasting rooms in these resource zones is to, you know, be accessory to that primary agricultural type use. So you do want to allow them, but these are resource zones. And you'll see that Note 3 in a couple of places, and that really relates to a lot of these areas. Again, allowing some of these non-pure agricultural uses, but in a limited amount so that they're still, again, accessory to those, you know, the primary kind of mechanism of these zones. So the next set of uses are some limited industrial uses. Allowed, again, really industrial types uses that are allowed to the resource zones. As well as carrying forward allowances for transportation, communication, utility uses, some related to primarily aviation and communication facilities. Then there's agriculture and natural resource use. Again, this is kind of that primary purpose of these zones. And then allowances for temporary uses.
I do have a question having to do with your footnote 5 that appears on several of those uses. There in footnote 5, it's administrative use permit approval is required for parcels less than 20 acres in size. Contiguous parcels under common ownership count cumulatively, I suppose, toward, towards two total of 20 acres. What happens if one of those parcels is sold to somebody else? And, and the, the total acreage thus is dropped below 20 acres? Is that, what would happen to that administrative use permit?
So, and, and this is a current allowance carried forward. So Gina may be able to give an example of maybe how that's been handled in the past. One thing that could occur through an administrative use permit, since through that process, conditions can be added to that permit. So one condition, for example, could be, should the, you know, other parcel be sold separately, certain things need to occur. But that would be a project-specific condition or consideration. And I believe that's why that those situations are required to have that administrative use permit so that the county can look at, well, okay, this, this use maybe seems okay, but what maybe would happen if something, you know, if that parcel gets sold off? Or maybe it would have a condition saying, you know, if you do sell your other parcel off, then that use needs to go away. But that would be evaluated on a case-by-case basis through that administrative use permit process.
It seems to me that some considerations should be made is that it's a consideration. If in issuing an administrative use permit, you forgot to put in a condition as to one, one group of parcels, and you put it in as to another, it seems to me that, that it is, it's, it's a situation where a common rule would take the vagaries of whether you get it in one and not in the other out of the, out of the picture. So that there just should be a statement under footnote 5 that would take care of that. I mean, is there any reason why there shouldn't just be a, a common rule?
Well, what you can do is you could say that, that contiguous parcels under common ownership, if they were to count towards that 20 acres, would be required to be merged into one. That is a call for you to make, on the one hand. That is more kind of set, right? More consistent. On the other hand, that's a little less flexible. Somebody might not want to merge their two parcels into one.
But it seems to me you could just say, continuous parcels under common ownership count cumulatively toward the total of 20 acres, subject to diminishment by sale or something of that sort, and just have it as part of this.
Well, that the administrative use permit might.
It might invalidate.
Intention upon the parcels continuing to be held under common ownership. That's what you're trying to.
Well, no, but my point is, is I think, I think it's something that, that footnote 5 could take care of. And so you wouldn't have to worry about each time that you did one of these administrative use permits, which probably can happen every 10 years, you'd have to remember to put in that condition. My suggestion would be that you establish a rule in footnote 5.
Commissioner Ladish, I'm, I'm trying to understand. The AUP is required if the parcels are less than 20 acres in size. Contiguous parcels under common ownership count cumulatively towards the total of 20 acres. So it doesn't really matter if it's, as long as it's less than 20 acres. Are you concerned if it exceeds 20 acres? If it exceeds 20 acres, then, then that.
If you sell off 10 acres of your 20 acres, maybe you're not still eligible to have that AUP. So they must remain under common ownership in order to continue that use.
And so the.
And it could, I think it could be handled here. Could be part of the AUP's conditions, that they must maintain the minimum of 20 acres.
I think Tim's concern is whether or not somebody's going to remember rolling in that specific condition every time we go to do an administrative use permit. If we simply establish the rule and apply it in code, then it's there.
That's what I.
Yeah, in perpetuity, and we don't have to think about actually rolling that in as a condition. So I, I guess we just need to.
The wording could just be changed. Say contiguous parcels under common ownership count, may count towards the total of 20 acres so long as they remain under common ownership. That wording is not great. Julie can do better.
No, but that's.
Julie can do better.
And then actually, we have a question too of these two sentences. I hope we don't have to spend so much time on every footnote. But if you just say contiguous, I think you'd have to say, in considering the administrative use permit, contiguous parcels under common ownership count cumulatively toward a total of 20 acres. Because otherwise, if you just say contiguous parcels under common ownership count towards total of 20 acres, somebody who has that situation might feel they not have, they don't need to even go for the administrative use permit.
So I, I agree. Like, we don't, if we wordsmithed everything in this venue, I think we would be here a very long time. So let's, we'll work on some language, but I think we're here.
That's all, that's all I need to hear.
Take a nap for us.
That's all I need to hear.
So Gina, are AUPs, are administrative use permits, are those on an, do you submit on an annual basis reapply?
It depends. There are some provisions in code such as currently short-term vacation rentals. You have to reapply for your permit. Same thing with special events. You have to reapply. It's not a blanket in perpetuity kind of a permit. But they can be a permit that runs with the land as long as the use is not discontinued without having to come back and renew it or reapply.
But there's no way that, that the planning department is notified if this person sold off?
No. And so the enforcement part of it would be rather difficult. It's just going to be, you know, usually I would, I would assume we would be, we would be notified of such a, a situation upon transfer of the, of the property. And then you are reaching out to us and perhaps saying, hey, can I do X, Y, and Z? And then you realize, oh, well, this parcel was part of a, a previous, you know, permit. And it, it included that parcel. So now what is the situation with the permit? Does it invalidate the permit since it, it's now below the threshold that's established by code? So, I mean, there could be some, you know, some legitimate reasons for merging those parcels, if that's the case. But I guess that would be up to, up to all of us to decide whether or not we want to go to that extreme. I would think that, that it's probably not going to be the rule. I would think it would be, you know, an exception. That it's probably not going to be the, the standard situation. Okay.
I have just happened another thing within the specific limitations. That's probably where we're going to get hung up. And I might be a little bit confused here. But Note 3, which talks about permitted as accessory to a farm as defined, then it's a primary source of income. Goes on. The primary source of income is that to the primary source of income of the landowner, the primary source of income of that farm. What is it? And do we really want to say that that has to be the primary source of income? Their source of income could be something else entirely, but they still have a farm that meets the minimum $1,000 threshold. It's the primary that's concerning me.
Yeah. I, I, I think what we're trying to achieve is, is identifying that the property is in agricultural production. And the problem that we have is when you don't, we, we need to establish that somewhat of a, a threshold because then the question is, well, what is a bona fide ag operation? Can I plant five fruit trees and call myself a commercial agricultural operation? And so I, I think the attempt is to establish that this land is primarily used for agriculture production. And, and that is the main source of income from the land. Not that you can't have a job as an architect, as, as your family's, you know, a source of income.
Or creating a consulting business off of that property that's making a whole lot. Or getting a consulting business off of that property that's making a whole lot of money.
So I, just to clarify, so it's, uh, the 3%, so the primary, um, so it's of that agricultural operation. So that, uh, so it's like, if you have crops and then you have an accessory use to those crops, say you're, well, let me take that back.
I, I think it's like if you were to have a winery there that produces wine, had a tasting room, but you only had half an acre of grapes. It's not primarily an agricultural operation.
Right. So of that winery that you have, the tasting room can only, so your grapes have to be the prime, where that ag operation gets its primary operation or primary income. The tasting room can only be 3% of the income of the winery operation. Does that, so it's not of everybody living on that property and everything that they do, it's of the farm.
But it's 3% of the land, not 3% of the money.
Oh, sorry, I'm getting the words mixed up. Yeah, so forget the 3%, but the, the income of the farm has to be primarily from the farm, not that accessory use.
Right.
You can't have an acre of grapes and a 10,000 square foot tasting room.
Right. So maybe it's just another asterisk to make it as clear as we can. Sorry.
And while you're at that asterisk, uh, I noticed, I mean, here, the tasting room is covered by footnote three, but when you go back to the use classifications, the only definition of tasting room that you find on page 102 talks about, uh, uh, operations offering food and beverage products for tasting as accessory to a retail sales facility. And I, I don't see where that, here, you can have, it looks to me like you're talking about two different definitions of tasting room, and I think I'm asterisked back on to page 103 to clarify the, the retail facility and the tasting room on a farm. There's, there's, needs to be some clarification there.
Yeah, you're right. Thank you.
Hey, we're on page 17, you know.
Anything else on the uses before we move to the, the development standards?
Nope.
So the development standards for the resource zones are, are, are pretty straightforward. There's no, um, substantive, substantial changes to them. They're really your existing ones carried forward. And as well as with the supplemental standards, so again, these are existing provisions that you have.
On that, I would just. I'm, excuse me, I'm sorry. The first line under supplemental standards, uh, when I read this, I, I looked as if road maintenance is required, and I was reading it as if it were, were applied to more broadly than to resource zones. So I would suggest we say road maintenance is required in resource zones as follows. There's separate requirements for road maintenance in some of the other.
Well, those will fall under the, the separate sections.
Yeah, but I, the, these particular provisions, as I understand it, only apply in resource zones.
Right.
So we ought to say in resource zones.
Except it's already.
But it's already in the resource zone.
I know it is. You come across this section, and if you're looking up road maintenance, you're going to find the section that says, oh, road maintenance is required as follows, and if you won't maybe.
It's the kind of thing where you, you are using the fine.
Yes, exactly.
And you come up with road maintenance in a few places, and you don't know where you are in the big document. It doesn't hurt anything to add it.
So those are, we can add that, and those are, again, the existing kind of provisions carried forward as well as for the ag preserves, um, and the TP zone, which is timber tech production. And those are very, very specific.
We have some recurring questions about the egg preserve zone as part of the Williamson Act, and it's required for the Williamson Act, but you don't have to be in the Williamson Act to be in the egg preserve zone.
I, I think it, I think I made clear in this.
Do we feel like that's all cleaned up in here?
Well, there's nothing to clean up because we, um, the county hasn't updated the, uh, the county board of supervisors' resolution that establishes rules for the Ag Preserve and Williamson Act. So, um, basically, we just carried that forward. And until that particular resolution is, um, is updated, um, not knowing what it's going to look like, we just decided to leave everything, um, currently the way it is. Yeah.
At the end of the year, when we're doing all the Williamson Act stuff, I'm going to ask this question again, or someone will ask it.
Um, so the next set of zone district regulations are the residential zones. And again, starting with the use pages, beginning with the residential uses, um, these, again, are pretty straightforward in your RR and R1 zones. It's really about detached, single-family dwellings. In your R2 and R3, you also start introducing attached, single dwellings like townhomes and multi-unit dwellings. There are allowances for cohousing, which is in your housing element, the SROs, which were in your housing element. So while they're new to the zoning code, they already exist within the county's, um, overall regulatory framework, so. Um, and then, of course, the housing allowances pursuant to state law that you're required to have.
So can I, can I stop real quick? Annette, Annette's asking if we, um, are taking in, um, public comment during this section, and the answer is yes. So if there's anybody online or otherwise in the audience that has comments specific to, um, the discussion that, that we're currently, um, having, then certainly, um, you know, we're, we're willing to take that, uh, those comments at this time. It makes more sense to do it now rather than wait until the end and have to backtrack.
Yep.
So the question for Annette is, do we have any such questions ready to be asked?
Yes, Tom and Fasino, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. The first question is, you have a section in the resource zone that deals with development standards. And it, it deals with things like setbacks. And I know that in the countywide rules that you're developing, you're going to be developing setbacks from wetlands and, uh, riparian areas and streamside zones, that sort of thing. And it's going to be a different section of the zoning ordinance. I'm wondering, is there a way in these development standards, just as a matter of being user-friendly, could we include them here as well? That's question number one. The second question, um, deals with, uh, private landing strips for airplanes. I'm a little bit, they're allowed in this zone, and I don't have a problem, we don't have a problem with that. The question is that usually, like at the airport, you have a surrounding overlay that puts height limitations on surrounding, uh, properties. And I'm wondering if, where you have private landing strips, are you going to have similar overlays letting people know that, hey, if I buy this parcel, I'm limited to a certain height, um, uh, for, um, you know, my barn or my other facility? And then the third question, and this is, uh, one I hope you'll have some discussion about, goes to the very beginning of this section where you deal with the residential uses, okay? And this, and with respect to the forested areas, the general forest and the timber preserve, we know that these are, uh, rated as high and very high, uh, fire, uh, risk areas. And as we proceed with climate change, those areas are going to get drier. And we know from the recent evacuation preparedness report prepared by the council of governments, that there are serious barriers to effective evacuation in these forested areas. And specifically regarding timber preserves, um, uh, are these really the places we want to put supportive housing, transitional housing, family daycare, and residential care facilities without any sort of use permit or review? Now, I recognize that that would also require a use permit level of review for the other residential uses. And I don't think that's inappropriate in timber preserve areas. This is not a place we want to concentrate, um, uh, uh, special needs people. This is not a place we need to concentrate our, you know, vulnerable children. So if, if it's a place where, in fact, evacuation is going to be very difficult, um, and fire risk is going to be very high. The, uh, last part of this, and this is a, is that especially in timber preserve areas, the purpose here is resource production. And I hope you realize that whenever you put a residential structure in a place, you change the nature of firefighting. If it's a resource area you're trying to protect, and there are no structures, you're, you're going to, you know, put in, in lines of defense, uh, and you're not going, and there's, and that's what the crew's going to be focusing on because there are no structures. Once you put in residential structures, the focus becomes on protecting those structures, and the resource, uh, protection a- aspect of firefighting disappears. So, um, I think it's important that we think about whether we want those residential uses all to just be allowed by right, um, in the, in these areas. So I hope you will discuss that, um, uh, because I think it's a topic that deserves some very serious thought at this point.
Taking up the last topic first, um, I do think as far as family daycare, small residential fair, care facility, supportive housing, and transitional housing, that, uh, we should consider at least making that subject to an administrative use permit, whether, you know, or, or more restrictive than that. As to the, uh, the setbacks, um, for wetlands, et cetera, I think it'd be good in, in the table to have a reference to where those were going to be. I don't, I don't know that we need to include them in both places, but.
Okay.
I think conceptually, anytime there's something that could change the clearances and setbacks, we should have just a reference to that section of the county wide.
Yeah, yeah. And then speaking of countywide, I think also the, the private airstrips. I, I don't remember now if they require an administrative use permit or conditional use permit or whatever, but, um, it's something that, uh, I, we're not going to have the entire county under an overlay for airports, but, uh, it's certainly something that should be considered when somebody is going to, uh, have that use, uh, that we can consider what.
Well, it's not. Well, and those aren't covered under the airport plan.
No, but I, but I think if you have, say, a conditional use permit required for a private airstrip, you, we could consider what are the surrounding characteristics? I mean, I agree with you, we're not, we're not going to restrict everybody in the county because somebody might have a private airstrip, but I think Mr. Ian Fasino raises good concern.
So, yeah, they're currently allowed with an administrative, uh, for the personal landing field, and then the, uh, uh, non, non municipal airstrips and glider ports are a conditional use permit. So there is a discretionary action that's required. So I suppose if there are, um, reasons for other limitations, then that could be rolled in as conditions.
Yeah.
I would think when we develop, we should have tablet conditions for private airstrips, and they shouldn't be able to be located so close to that boundary up there.
Right.
I'm, I'm sure I have a question for Martha. I noticed that we did not call out specifically farmworker housing. And this, uh, this is a land use that is, when you look at our, our current housing element, it's one of those things that we're prescribed by the states to provide for. Are farmworker housing units implied in, in the transitional housing or, or supportive housing? Because I, I, I think for our purposes, we want to call them out specifically rather than have them implied as something that is permitted under whatever.
So this, this is where state law is real clear. They actually, the state, state law actually calls farmworker housing employee housing.
Right.
And so that's why we add this in parentheses for farmworkers, because that's the way we think about it. But if you were to then go look at state law for the equivalent, you need to look under employee housing. So our solution, um, is to call it employee housing, and that, and then just say for farmworkers, and if we look at the definition of. Where housing.
So, um, employee housing would also cover, um, those employees of, say, of a timber production, uh, um, operation.
And they would also, should also cover those who are farming marijuana in the county.
Which raises a more general question of, it seems as if the actual cultivation of, of cannabis is not really covered in here.
No, no, so that.
Because it's still officially not agriculture?
Yeah, so we're.
But this is a residential section.
So I, I just, we, the, the, the board is writing, been sort of working and putting, providing direction to the cannabis department on changes to 1795. And so what we're trying to avoid, I think, is having changes simultaneously being made here that are separate from the board's direction. So my recommendation for now would be to leave cannabis alone and just refer to 1795 or 1791 for everything rather than create our own definitions in here. Just because we have a ready definitions in there, so.
Sounds good to me.
So Gina, I, I have a question.
Yeah.
Under general forest and timber production.
Timber preserve.
Oh, timber, I'm sorry, no. Are there, so people in a, in a, in a general forest, can they, they can build a house?
Yeah, they can currently build a home.
Think about, I mean, those subdivisions of Highway four, where they once general forest, and now they're like zoned are, I mean, so.
No. A lot of them.
Those were, right? So I just, I'm trying to wrap my head around, so are there a number of parcels that are general forest?
Yes.
That are not for timber production?
No, so if you're in, uh, timber production with a timber harvest plan, most of the land in our county is owned by SPI that's in timber. most of the land in our county is owned by SPI that's in timber production.
Right.
You've also got US Forest Service land that might be zoned TP. Those are actually parcels of land in, for which there is an actual timber harvest plan. And so they are actively growing and harvesting timber for production. So there's, there's a whole different set of regulations that goes with that. You know, there's, the timber harvest plan is a, is a process that involves CEQA and has, has gone through, you know, extensive environmental review. It's a permit that's held by, by the landowner through CAL FIRE. And they've got, you know, registered professional foresters involved and whatnot. So the general forest zone is really kind of like a step down. It's kind of like the, the AG zones. It's the A1 to the AP kind of a thing, so...
So if I bought a thousand acres and I developed a harvest plant for my timber, I could live on that property.
Sure.
And I can, I can build one house on that property.
Yes, yes.
And an ADU.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Plus an accessory.
An accessory building.
Plus an accessory.
Right, right. So the new references... Yeah. And my, my question to you, Martha, is, is there some sort of a state regulation that prohibits us from further restricting, say, family daycare, small residential care facilities, the supportive and transitional housing? Or do we have to allow those?
So you have to treat them just like any other residential use.
Right, okay, that's what I thought.
You can, say, require a CUP for that single family dwelling.
Okay.
But then, once somebody builds that single family dwelling, if they put supportive housing in that, that's just permitted because that, it, it's a residential use. So that residential use is already established and now I'm serving these types of people through that. So you can require, say, a CUP or an AUP for the dwelling, but you can't say, oh, a CUP for a dwelling. And then also, once you have that, you also need a CUP for family daycare. Like, you can't, you know, double up that way.
So you're saying that one could establish or construct a single family residence and then convert it over to transitional housing?
Or operate family daycare out of it.
Right, okay.
So I'm sorry, can I just follow up with a question, Martha? So does this mean that we cannot have a limitation on these special types of dwellings unless we also have that same limitation on a single family dwelling?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I...
That's why I hear it.
Okay.
So on the, on the chart on page 13, well, starting with timber preserves, in order to have any restrictions on any of this housing, you would need to have the same level of restriction
Yes.
on single unit dwelling
Yes.
detached. And I, I, for fire safety reasons and all others, I would, I would think that we should have a conditional use permit down the line for timber preserves and then consider about general forest.
And, and just let me clarify though. So, so yes. But if I build a single family dwelling, say I come in and you give me an AUP or a CUP for that and I live there, and I'm there, and then I sell that to somebody and that person comes in and is in the house and then they go, oh, I want to operate family daycare out of here. You cannot require the AUP or CUP for that family daycare.
Yeah.
The residential use is already established. Family daycare is a residential use. I can operate that.
So...
So I just want to make, it's a nuance, but I want to just make that clear.
I haven't said that, Martha. Could we make that a footnote so that it's absolutely clear? Because, you know, in practice, we're gonna go from planner to planner and the first thing they're gonna look for is the chart. And if the chart says, oh, family daycare needs an AUP, they want to request an AUP rather than realizing that this is a conversion of an existing single family residence. So I think it would be much clearer if we have footnotes. If we go the route of making, you know, single family residential in the TP as, as a use permit of CUP or AUP, then we want to have footnotes that says any of these other adjunct types of housing units will be subject to the same but not treated separately. So, which means you now have to require an additional conditional use permit if you, if you converted an existing single family to a...
That's a, it's a good idea.
Yeah, let's put a footnote on there. Applies...
It's required for the first residential.
There you go. And any other type of uses would be subject to the same.
But, but what we would have... But I think that the, the concern is that we'll have CUP on, down the line here.
Yeah, exactly, that's, yeah.
So you need a footnote saying...
Right, when it's, we say, yeah. So, so it's not just a CUP for, if, if the, if the existing house is a CUP and it's a conversion of that house into any of these other uses, the CUP for the existing house carries. However, if in addition to the existing house, you wanted to build an additional type of housing unit for any of these other categories, what is the rule? Martha?
So Gina, I know this is kind of nuanced in language. The state doesn't look at those as different uses.
Okay.
Right.
They're a residential use. So in the state's mind, family daycare isn't a new use or doing supportive housing isn't a conversion of a use. It's the same use to them. It's residential.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it just...
So to build a second building for that, so that would just require an amendment of the original CUP, I would think.
It would be an expansion.
The use.
Right.
But if you're only allowed one single unit dwelling, which is what you're limited to plus your ADU, so here you're only allowed one dwelling unit. You can't build, I can't build a house and then build another house for my supportive housing.
Yeah, and I...
If you can, you can build an accessory dwelling unit.
Well, but the ADU itself has restrictions. So I think that's a good point, though. I think maybe we need to also clarify that these are not additional uses, that these are actually within the, the residential use.
Yeah, so...
Luckily, we don't have to draft that language today.
No.
Martha, it's nice to have you here.
Yeah, so I think having a footnote would help.
So...
So what do we want to do?
I have a question. Am I, am I still, can you still hear me?
Yes, yes.
You raised the question. I think you, the title will comment.
What I, what I was contemplating was, as Michelle was suggesting, a template of conditions that would apply in an administrative use permit for any residential use in the timber preserve area. And it would include any conditions you would want to place on any of the uses, including the air facility, the transitional zoning, the supportive housing.
So what you can't do is say this applies to supportive housing.
No, it applies to all residential uses.
Right.
It's, it's a template that applies to all residential uses on, in that category of TPZ.
But the, the template itself can't, in effect, bar, say, a small residential care facility. You just have to...
No, but it could say something like it has to be on a road, on a paved road within a mile of a highway.
Yes.
Or it has to be, you know, within, you know, five miles of the fire department or, you know, something that provides for the health, safety, and welfare of those people living there. So we're not putting supportive housing, you know, in the middle of, in, in a place that's not a good place to put it. I also, I also want you to think about one other thing here. There's, you say, there was sort of a discussion, well, CF Pacific Industries owns most of the TPZ, so what are we worried about? You are correct that CF Pacific Industries is one of the largest timber owners in California. Owns 1% of the state. It's also one of the major developers in California. And what you, you could remember here is as these, as we move forward in climate change here, the productivity of their timber lands is declining in the marginal areas. So they're gonna have more and more land. They're gonna be looking to transition out of timber preserve and into general forest and other uses. So it's, it's, this is, this could be a bigger, this is a bigger concern because of that.
Well, you know, I, I think one of the things, if we're gonna develop some kind of a template, would be something regarding defensible states. I mean, if our major concern really is about safety and things of that nature, if we decide to go that route, that might be something that goes across the board anyway.
And the general plan itself has provisions
Right.
about...
Yeah. So, so compliance, yeah, complies with...
Martha?
4291.
Can, can these be viewed as, as specific limitations that can be rolled into, specific to the TP? And whether or not they want to include GF, I would personally recommend against it. But if we're looking at further restricting those uses in the TP zone, can we simply create a specific limitation and throw it on to the end of number six? Throw it?
So, so yes, you can. So you can, you have a couple of options. You can leave it as is and no, you know, and rely on the current standards and regulations that you have in place. That include that the maximum density is one dwelling unit per legal lot. And you can look at the size of the lots that are there. And any further development or subdivision would go through a whole discretionary process.
Right, right.
You also have current defensible space requirements and fire safe requirements that are outside of this code but are required as far as your fire code and your building code as well as access requirements. So one, you can rely on those. Another thing you can do is just what Gina said and is include certain standards just as development standards into this code. And, but that would apply to a, a single family residence. And you can put in there whatever you want within five miles of a fire station, within, you know, a mile of a county road. Whatever you decide you're comfortable with. The third option would be to just simply require an AUP or a CUP for, again, for the single family residence. And through that, you would do CEQA and then you would look at all kinds, you know, whatever kinds of concerns that you have. So of course, we can do any, a lot of iterations of that, but I think those are your three primary options. And maybe you don't need to define today, but...
Right, right, right. But I would think that these properties are less likely to be developed in any of these ways. So I, I don't, I don't think it's, I, I, I under, I think I, I understand what's being, what the concern is. But I, I haven't seen, I mean, we certainly haven't had any, you know, we're currently not reviewing building permits for residential uses in the TP zone. You know, we're not fielding phone calls about putting residences in the TP zone. I can understand the concern about, you know, the foreseeable future. But again, I mean, these are parcels that are restricted in, in size through the general plan. So, you know, you're, you're looking about, you know, one, one house, one single family residence per large parcel of land. Now, that doesn't preclude someone from wanting to subdivide, but that's a whole different process and, and CEQA is definitely involved. But...
Well, I think it's important to, to show the concern. I mean, if it doesn't happen very often, why, that's great.
Right.
But if we require a CUP for single unit dwelling and therefore CUP that, including the others, I, I think it's probably a good idea and it's not something that's gonna come up very often, but it shows, reflects the concern. So I, at least for, for timber preserve, that's what I would suggest.
So, so Martha, could we just add a footnote instead of making them a CUP that, you know, there are certain conditions on the, the building? Is that what Gina's, yeah?
Yeah.
I mean, could, yeah, you could just bring...
Instead of requiring an actual permit application and a CEQA analysis, if you just simply cut to the chase and say, this is what the, you know, this is what we want, this is where we want it and this is how we want it to look, then you can just simply roll that into the code as a specific limitation. But I don't, I don't know that we can necessarily sit here and draft that today. Oh, yeah, sure.
We want to do something here that would give us all a chance to think about it a little bit more.
Right.
We want to do something.
Would you clarify why you think, even if we do something on TP, that you wouldn't recommend you do it on GF?
Well, GF, generally speaking, are smaller parcels and they're located not necessarily up in amongst the TP zone. You know, there's a lot of, of residences currently existing in, on GF zoned parcels. And yeah, they are, generally speaking, up in the forest land, but they're smaller parcels that are not necessarily, you know, used for lit timber production kinds of uses. They're, they're, they're residences. They're people that are living there and using it much like you would, say, an A1 zone. You know, they might have a little tree farm or something. I, I just... More permits is to have played. Not, not that we want to throw the baby out with the bathwater, but yeah.
I want to think about this.
Yeah, sure.
It was a very good thing to have been brought back.
While we're on the subject, Tom and Fasino, I'm wondering, do we also want to consider it in the ag preserve zone?
I don't think we have the same, the same safety concerns. I don't think we have the same safety concerns in our ag preserve zones as we would say with timber production. Right. No.
I could move on to something really easy here.
I don't think you could.
I don't either. The bed and breakfast ends, the footnote six, well, let's see.
Oh, footnote six.
Page 15 and then they, they, they show up in many of these different graphs. But footnote six. So if, if you have a bed and breakfast in one legal, one single unit dwelling and you have an accessory dwelling unit on that property, you cannot use that as part of the bed and breakfast?
The ADU?
Yeah.
No, it's a state, it's against state regulation.
Ah, you can't use...
No transient occupancy in an ADU.
See, that was easy.
Yeah.
Thank you.
But you, the landowner, could live in your ADU.
Yeah, yeah, got it.
But then, but then you don't occupy the dwelling there, so you're kind of...
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, did we, we covered all of that, right? We're back to residential.
I have to, I have to.
Okay, oh, so we're, we're out of resource now?
I think so.
At least, believingly. And we talked about, a little bit about the, the residential uses that are allowed. And then there's a limited number of public and semi... And then there's a limited number of public and semi-public type uses. Allowed, these are ones that are generally kind of consistent with the neighborhood atmosphere or required conditional use permit to ensure that if they were going in, they are compatible. There's certain limited commercial uses allowed. And these are primarily in the residential rural zone. And Gina can go into a little bit more with, this is kind of one of those transition zones between, you know, I think we had rural agriculture in the last set of zones. This is residential rural, so there's still a little bit of agriculture, but we're really getting some more of the primary use of these. These are primarily residential-type properties. So that's where you see the different permit levels and footnotes related to that. Kind of similar with industrial uses and the agricultural and natural resource uses. So, but then R1, R2, and R3 zones are, you know, pretty much focused solely on residential and limited other types of uses.
I have a question about the not allowing co-housing in the rural residential zone, but allowing it in R1.
And I don't know, Gina, if you know off the top of your head, I would need to, like, I forget if the housing element specifically identified these zones or if based on just a description of allowances in the housing element, we thought these were the zone.
Yeah, I don't specifically recall.
Okay.
That's just something you could check?
Yeah.
Yeah, and we'll check that. If the housing element did not specifically say R1, am I hearing that maybe co-housing isn't appropriate in that zone?
No, I'm thinking co-housing could be allowed in the rural residential zone.
Okay.
And in fact, I think that most of the people who talk to me about the possibility of developing something along those lines are in the more rural areas.
Good question.
Okay, we'll review the housing element in relation to that.
Thank you.
And since we.
Anything else?
Well, in this, in the land use regulations, residential zones, we have the listing for special events, but we want to put that discussion off.
Right.
Till later.
Yeah, this is just the cross-reference to that section.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, with regard to anything regarding animal keeping, there is another section of our code, which is section six, that talks strictly about animals. And sometimes we have, at the staff level, discovered that there is discrepancy between definitions, for example, and what the animal section, the county section, that does with animals, what they consider to be one thing is different from what it is in our, in our zoning code. So I'm, I'm hoping that with this update, we have been able to reconcile some of those differences between Title VI, that talks strictly about animals, number of animals, what is considered to be a breeding facility with what we may have in Title VII.
So are we suggesting that we address the entire animal keeping section separately? And then come back and have it.
Yes.
Into this?
Yes. Or else we'll be repeating the same thing, we would not have made any progress.
We might make more headway if we do it that way. Just keep, I mean, we're, we're make, keep, we're making pretty good, you know, progress. We've got momentum going forward, so if we can just kind of.
And it's a separate.
Hate to use the term blow through these others that don't seem to be of much concern to people that.
Like special events, it has its own special.
Oh, it's special.
Animal standards are set forth later.
So.
So I have a question, Gina, what's, how big is a legal lot? I tried to find the definition.
Well, it's not based on size. It'll be based on, you know, legal description. So, you know, there are legal parcels that are established through MAP, through, you know, parcels that are in compliance with the Subdivision MAP Act. So there's not a specific size that indicates there's, a parcel is legal or, or not.
So it's, if it's recorded, it's legal?
Yeah, so, you know, there's different scenarios. There's patents, there's, you know, lots of other situations that I can't really speak to because I'm not a licensed land surveyor or someone that's involved with, you know, a title specialist of any kind. But, but certainly there are those parcels that we would determine to be unlawful or illegal parcels based on their, their lack of compliance with the Subdivision MAP Act in how they were created. And we have had some of those, you know, identified over, over the years that we have to address, but.
Well, I guess, I mean, what is the premise of your question?
I'm just curious, you know, the, the differences between R1 and R2 and R3. You know, when you do a subdivision, if you had a 20-acre parcel and you subdivided it, you know, what, I mean, some lots go down to, you know, maybe quarter acre or less. And I'm, I'm just curious about density in those areas. And do we?
And on the general plan designation, and then here are no other specific plan, and if they have transferred density grounds, so they have.
Yeah.
General planning zoning defines what your minimum lot size should be.
Right, and then whether or not.
Sewer.
And so on and on.
Right.
If we're ready for development standards in residential.
Yes.
All these setback numbers are the existing setback numbers, correct? So on page twenty-six, five foot.
Under the development standards, yes, those are just carried forward.
Yeah.
So are we not talking about the rest of the uses in?
No, we're, we're looking, I think.
Okay.
Taking it quick.
Yeah, so the, the development standards are carried forward. The supplemental standards, these kind of look similar to some previous ones. These do actually identify the zone. And these are also the current ones carried forward for that. Road maintenance. Commercial zones, this does include the new historic center zone. And that's really intended to allow for a mix of residential and visitor-serving uses. And so that's something to look at of whether, you know, there's uses that maybe we have in there that maybe you think wouldn't be appropriate in those areas, or ones that maybe aren't allowed, that maybe you think should be allowed. That is that brand-new zone. But you can see for, especially the historic center, the local, commercial, and the professional office category, there are that mix of uses allowed, the residential and commercial. And we go down to the note. There's really a difference of whether it's on upper stories or behind commercial uses. And that's, you're permitted, and that's really to incentivize and encourage that type of pattern to retain the commercial uses around the ground floor and have residential above or behind. That's still, that doesn't mean that that county can't consider allowing residential along the frontage. It's just a conditional use permit is required. And that just allows you to weigh the pros and cons of that, you know, of that ask.
May I suggest that this would be a great time for a break?
Yeah.
Being new and commercial and spend three hours.
Yeah, why, how much time does everybody feel like they need for lunch?
Fifty minutes.
Forty-five minutes?
I was going to suggest fifty.
Fifty's fine.
Fifty minutes.
Is that going to work for you, Julie? So why don't we all try to be back here about ten to one?
And then the intent is to go to two thirty-three?
Yep. So are we, are we back on then?
Yes.
I think so. Martha, can you hear us okay?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, all right.
Thank you. Sorry, did you want me to jump in?
No, please do.
Okay, so we kind of left off at commercial zones, and I'll share my screen again. At the use tables, so yeah, you're right. It does include the historic center, which is the new zone. And please look at the allowed uses and the required permits for those uses in that zone and, you know, make sure those are appropriate.
But the. Martha, can I make a suggestion? If you enlarged your screen, we could, if you can make it one page.
Yep.
Per view, it would make it more legible for those who might be trying to do it online.
Those that might be trying to do it here.
Right, right. So if you, if you just enlarged the screen size, it would, there you go. Then keep going, and then it would just be one page. There you go. No, that's it.
Those are for our, all of our eyeballs over the age of fifty.
So the commercial zones in general, these use tables, I think, are the longest of the sets of zone districts because commercial zones do allow really kind of a variety of uses and including those residential uses like I talked about. So we kind of introduce those where in your commercial, in these kind of mixed-use center areas, residential is allowed, of course, encouraged to be on top or behind commercial uses. And then ground-floor residential uses along the street frontage could still be considered, but that's through a conditional use permit. So allowances for residential uses, allowances for public and semi-public uses, which you typically see within your, you know, commercial, active commercial areas. A wide variety then of commercial uses, and you see generally the more kind of smaller scale or least intense uses allowed more in the, you know, your.
I might, I might, Martha, I have a question. Will we go down to adult entertainment?
Could resist.
Okay, shall we locate it a minimum of a thousand feet from any other such use? I'm concerned, is there any state law or regulation regarding where it's located? Okay, you know where my question's going.
Yeah, so it's actually federal law. So adult entertainment uses are protected under the Constitution as part of free speech. So you, every jurisdiction has to allow them in a reasonable number of locations. They have to be allowed. So these are your existing provisions carried forward. And my recommendation in doing any of these comprehensive updates is to leave your adult entertainment regulations alone, kind of as is. So typically, when these were originally adopted, when jurisdictions originally adopted them, it was a lot of kind of attention was paid to them. And they're typically done by lawyers because you're trying to really regulate them as much as possible without going outside the boundary, you know, without being kind of vulnerable to that. So these provisions carry your adult entertainment allowances forward.
So you, could you have a C2 zone across the street from a school?
Yes.
You could, right?
You could.
And so, I mean, and so an adult entertainment could be within, and it says a thousand feet from any other such use, but it could be another use. And there's no way we can, and you're just thinking we should just leave it alone as opposed to addressing that?
Well, so you can address that. So you could do a separation from, from a school or any other sensitive use. I typically, and again, because these are specialized uses, in a general comprehensive update, I am not a land use attorney. I am not schooled in everything about adult entertainment and their protections. I tend to, again, carry existing forward. If your county and your county council is comfortable putting that in, you can certainly do that.
Since it's required a conditional use permit, could we, as a condition, say you can't do it there? You have to do it 500 feet away from a school?
And you could couple that with findings of why. So there's certain kind of findings, and I don't know them off the top of my head, but where you can make, you know, locating this nuisance-type uses here may have these detrimental effects and blah, blah, blah. I don't know exactly, but so.
Is the same thing we do for cannabis?
Yeah, the same thing we do for cannabis. The same thing we can do for alcohol beverage, places that sell alcoholic beverages. So the local jurisdictions have the option of setting certain parameters for not only separating similar uses, but also separating them for what are considered to be sensitive uses, like schools and churches and so on and so forth.
So I, I'm, are you, am I hearing that you want to actually come up with affirmative rules for doing that in advance? I think in order to do that for this particular use, I would want to look at, I'd have to review case law.
Sure.
Alternatively, we could make it a CUP and just have it case by case since it doesn't come up very often.
Well, it is a CUP.
But I'm just saying, and the conditions could be imposed when we get an application.
Oh, I see.
Right.
On a site-specific basis.
So we don't need to specifically address the limitations or regulations now?
It's your choice.
We can do that through the use permit process, of course, with the advice and recommendation from council based on.
Assuming it's, it's the way it is right now, that it's be in C2, restricted to C2 with a conditional use permit. Somebody comes in and they're applying for a permit for a location that is C2. Can we say, well, tough luck, we don't want you there, we want you somewhere else?
Well, we have to apply the zoning rules consistently.
Right.
But if, I mean, I guess we could if you wanted to, and I don't, Martha, I don't know off the top of my head. I would imagine there's no prohibition on having, like, simply for schools, a 500-foot limitation that's similar to cannabis. That's not content-specific, and as long as we're not completely regulating them off the map. Do you happen to know off the top of your head, or is this something that we'll need to run past, mint your harness when we're done? Um, do you happen to know off the top of your head, or is this something that we'll need to run past, mint your harness, um, when we're done?
No, I think the key is making sure you're not then, by incorporating that, you're then precluding them throughout the county.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, you still have to, so in doing that, then you would just have to go through the exercise of still ensuring there's reasonable locate, you know, number of locations where they could potentially be located.
Right.
Okay, I then-
So I think it's not just schools that would have to be, like, schools, daycare.
Parks.
So as long as whatever zone they're allowed, zones are allowed and there are places for them to go.
Right.
Instead of like there's one place.
We can't say, we, you need to be a mile from any sensitive site.
Right. But if you wanted to apply those limitations, then of course that would be taken into consideration when we're processing the conditional use permit. You know, to verify whether or not they're meeting all those, uh, minimum requirements.
Right. But I think it would be only fair to them to give them a heads up that,
Right.
you don't be looking at that location right across from them.
So give us an idea of what you want and maybe we can draft-
What we did with the cannabis dispensaries. I think it's probably gonna be-
We start there and see if we need to.
I would suggest that instead of saying from any other such use, I would just say any other adult entertainment use.
Okay.
Just in case somebody'd say, oh, well, indoor entertainment is the same thing as this.
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll look at that. I know it's, it's larger now, but I don't wanna skip past to stuff if people want me to stop. So these are all still the allowances under commercial type uses.
Question about bed and breakfast. Those are single, the, the, I think footnote three says single-family units. Am I, I may be mistaken?
Single-unit dwellings?
Yeah, I, yes, or just, or it says lodging, bed and breakfast, A and then footnote three?
Yeah.
I guess my question is, I think there's a thing in Murphy's, right? The, whatever that, I mean, it's a, there's more than, is a single, can a single-family home be divided into five bedrooms, six bedrooms? And can be, like the Dunbar House, I think that's the one I'm thinking of. And then that's been still considered a single-family residence?
A single unit.
A single unit?
Yeah, you take a single-family, it has to be on the scale of a single-family residence or conversion of a-
Okay, okay.
Historic, single-family residence, kind of a thing. It's not cottages all over the place, right?
Right, right. Well, because then you start taking on more of a, um, defined use like a motel.
Okay.
Um, so, um, the idea of a bed and breakfast, I think is, you know, pretty traditional. Traditionally understood that it is five or fewer rooms within a single-family residence for where the owner of the, you know, the, the residence is occupied by the owner of the, of the property and it's-
So you wanna keep it single unit? Cause that, that does sound-
I don't know if that's the right wording.
We can change the wording. I think we're just keeping consistent with the, the language, so, I mean, if you look under residential housing types, you know, we now refer to a sing, what we know as a single-family residence to a single-unit dwelling. And so we're just continuing, you know, we're just being consistent with the language, but, I don't know. I'm assuming Martha, that that's kind of like the new language of the industry today. I mean,
It may-
Maybe we're just so far behind times.
I figured, within the same four walls.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think it would matter, um, that couldn't happen anyway, so it seems like that would be fine. I mean, you could have a single-family residence that is two pods connected together or not connected together that you want. I mean, single-family residence doesn't have to be, so it seems like you're limiting it by the number of bedrooms.
And within four walls.
Well, I'm saying, why does it need to be? We don't limit a single-family residence to within four walls.
I don't know why. I don't, now, the reason why we couldn't include an accessory building was state law.
Clear.
That's state law. What does state law-
Well, I think then we kinda start venturing off into the, um, the challenge of, of, uh, property owners wanting to construct bedrooms that are beyond-
But if they're limited by the number, what does that matter?
But what I'm saying is that, um, that the bedrooms often are expanded to be more than just a bedroom. You know, now they have, um, refrigerators and, you know, wet bars and, oh, by the way, now you have a washer and dryer. And, oh, it's still just a detached bedroom, but now it has all these components that somebody actually could live in. And, and you could actually, even though they're not calling it a separate unit-
But we care.
Do we care?
They don't have cooking in it.
Well, but it's very easy to put cooking in it when you just have a counter and you've got a sink and you've got a refrigerator. Alls you need to do is drop in a microwave and you can-
That's the same argument you would have with a single-family residence and you wouldn't win it.
Well, and that's why they're limited to one.
I mean, I've done single-family residences where the bedrooms were pods that were not part of the main house that were connected with breezeways.
Sure.
Say they weren't-
I mean, I don't think that's gonna come up very often, but I think if you described it as the equivalent of a single-family residence or something else that, instead of saying it has to be within four walls, because people have all sorts of cool and creative ideas that we necessarily want to squash.
Well, I think, I mean, the question for me, one of the questions is, what does the state require? And if the state requires the four walls thing, then we're done talking.
They don't, bed and breakfast have any requirements, we're not-
You can't use accessory dwelling, accessory building.
Right, but, but that's not the question. We're not suggesting they should be able to use their-
When does it causeway to another pod?
When it's not a, it gets an accessory dwelling, it has to have all the components that live independently so that it was easy and you wouldn't allow.
Yeah, I see.
But you could allow it, it could be a junior ID, and I don't think you can rent those either, so.
Not for transient occupancy.
I, it just seems like there's got to be wording that is a little more flexible than a single-unit building.
Well, if you wanted to do a different configuration, I guess I'm confused. So you're, you want de, to allow detached units?
I have done homes that had detached bedrooms and offices and spaces, but they were all part of a single-family development. They weren't ADUs and, so I'm just saying, so let's say somebody has one of those and they wanna convert it to a bed and breakfast. Why, yeah, why would we stop them from doing that? It still had the owner living on site and no more than the five bedrooms and-
So anything less than an actual accessory building? Anything less than that?
Well, I mean, I mean, one thing this code has done, that's an upgrade to what we currently have, is to require the owner to actually live on site, because if you look at our definition for what a bed and breakfast is, it doesn't stipulate that the, that the owner has to live on site. So, and that has created problems for us, uh, in the past whereby, oh yeah, it could be a, a bed and breakfast. Well, doesn't the owner have to reside on the premises? The code currently doesn't say that, so this is an upgrade. Uh, as far as being within four walls, um, I'm trying to picture, Michelle, what you, uh, from your architectural standpoint, how would that look? Is there a central building and then you have all these other buildings kind of-
You, perhaps, often.
Sure.
Usually what it is, is, uh, in my experience, I'm sure other people have done other things, it's a, you know, a great room, the, the typical great room, usually the primary bedroom and bath, not always. The laundry, all the usual things are the main building and then there's like, the, they might have a guest room that is, has a little breezeway connecting to it and an office or, or a studio or some space like that that also is like a separate pod. But I think we could take care of it by saying a single-unit building or equivalent of a single-family residence. I mean-
So are we, are we saying that a single-unit dwelling is confined? Do we define that as, as being confined within four walls?
Well, that's what I'm trying to say is,
Yeah.
that's what, that's how these guys are interpreting it right now and that's what I'm trying to get away from.
Yeah, and I, I agree with you. Um, I mean, it didn't make any difference to be in, have the accessory dwelling, not be included, but if the state doesn't like that, by, okay.
Well,
Can I get in, can I get in on this?
Sure.
Alright, okay. Um, I think it's important for people to remember that this bed and breakfast use is not just in the commercial zone.
Right.
So, if you have this bed and breakfast use allowed in, with detached units, are you gonna allow it? I mean, it's already gonna be allowed with the use permit in residential R-one. So are you envisioning a one-acre lot with multiple, um, cabins on it?
No, we're not talking multiple cabins, I'm talking about a design of a, that is the equivalent of a single-family residence and yes, it could easily fit on a single-family lot.
Exactly.
Okay.
I think this is one, maybe Gina, you and I can sit down and kinda go through, cause I'm also curious on, you know, how, like, just generally you handle these types of developments? You know, do you, you know, through the, your building permit process, is this a dwelling? So, let's, let Gina and I sit down and kinda go through this.
I wouldn't say that.
Yeah. I think it's just coming up with the description.
Sure.
And, and remembering like Tom said, that it applies everywhere that crops.
Right, right, right.
That's a good point.
I have another subject matter. Why ban funeral parlor's from historic center? I mean, if anything's historic.
Death is definitely historic.
Oh, on page thirty-two.
Page thirty-two.
Funeral parlor's and terminus.
Funeral parlor, I could see that, but, yeah.
I mean, certainly you can allow them, they typically tend not to be, um, uses that generate foot trapping or pe, you know, they're really special.
They're not tourist-related usually.
Okay.
Sweet, oh.
Right.
Yeah.
They tend not to be active uses that you, um, wanna ensure are in your-
So it would thwart the, the historic center concept? Sure, to put that in.
Right, right.
I have yet another question. And mine has to do with, on page thirty-three, agricultural food and beverage processing, less than ten thousand square feet of lore. And, I'm, I feel like it could be allowed with a use permit, maybe a conditional use permit depending. In C-one also, in that we are starting to see businesses that are primarily a tasting room or their, their processing of beer, wine, or distilled spirits is part of the experience that it's a tourist attraction to come and see how it's done. And then they have a tasting room in front and,
Right.
sometimes they have food associated with it and, so it, it seems like you don't wanna preclude that, but maybe you want a little bit additional, of additional oversight so that it doesn't become a, kind of more institutional or use.
But then, and that also raises the question of why administrative use permit, uh, for historic center and not CP or C-one?
I can see why you wouldn't have it in CP, but it seems like HC, C-one, C-two could all have it with a permit of some kind. And it only comes up because I've just been noticing it around.
And, and so you can, can certainly do that. Um, I just do want, because I hear also some, um, or I just wanna point out kind of the changing use of land use that we noticed is just like you said, things aren't just one thing anymore. They're a tasting room plus, um, actually, let me do like a coffee shop. You're a coffee shop, but you're also, you roast your own coffee in a small section and you have a retail component. And those access, those accessory activities are allowed with that primary, you know, permitted primary use. So, kind of a lot of those smaller-scale things that you see integrated into other uses are allowed pursuant to the accessory use, um, section. This is, if it was this egg, food and beverage process, agricultural food and beverage processing as a primary use.
Yeah.
I'm not saying it's not appropriate in C-one, but I, I do just wanna like, kind of, let you know.
Yeah, let's go ahead and read that definition, cause I'm, I'm thinking it's not appropriate in the C-one zone. So the definition of agriculture, food and beverage processing, um, is she getting down there? Um, establishments engaged in the production, processing, packaging, or manufacturing of food and beverage products. This classification, um, okay, well, pardon me, excludes, um, slaughtering of animals and fowl, so.
What page are you in?
Uh, one oh-five. Uh, butchering of already slaughtered animals. Um, examples, yeah, do include a coffee roasting, microbreweries, um, micro-distilleries, wine manufacturing, uh, cheesemaking.
Candy-making.
Candies, so, you know, I mean, it seems to be on a pretty small scale.
I think we could do it with a conditional use permit and the, one of the conditions would have to be it has a public component or retail component. I don't think we wanna encourage somebody to have something that is wholly production without any public draw.
Right.
I don't know how does that-
So-
The recognition seems to contemplate the process, it'd be the whole, whole business.
Well, I think if you're talking about it by itself, it's truly an industrial use that could be, you know, impactful. But if you're associating it with something, say, food, then it's probably gonna take on a much different, um, kind of a business.
And that seems like that same-
Which is very trendy, you see it.
Would be in historic center and C-two as well. Right, if it's purely industrial, it belongs in that M.
And I, I do think just given the nature of your C-one zone and the infrastructure and the buildings available there, likely if one of these uses go in, it's not gonna be a big industrial operation.
Right, right.
But we-
So do we want to allow it without the requirement of some other associated food?
Well, I wouldn't want to allow it without it in historic center either. I would think those would be similar concerns, right?
Right.
I'm sorry, repeat that?
It, it's allowed with a administrative use permit in the historic center. So it seems like those two should have a similar requirement.
Oh, oh, yes.
The tourists wouldn't get in the door because they're processing food.
Right.
Right.
So I'm just, I just feel like we should-
So why not C-one? Is that what you're saying?
That's my point, yeah.
Yeah.
But I do think we would need maybe one of those notes, the specific requirement is that there be a retail or tasting room component to it, something.
Maybe have that note applied under historic center.
Exactly.
With A and then the footnote put not together.
Yes, exactly.
Got it.
Good.
And now I have to get one more. All predicated on my experience is that we have um, contractors and materials yard, look, it's right below. And so it's only allowed in C2, but now we have contractors who actually have showrooms as part of that and their entire contractor's yard is inside. So it's not the, um, blight on the landscape that we used to think of contractors' yards as being. And so it seems like we could have a contractors and materials yard and with a, combined with an office or showroom in C1. Again, with a conditional use permit, probably.
Right, I mean, there are a lot of land uses, um, in that category of industrial uses that I could see as being a little bit limiting. Uh, because when we talk about C1 or C2 zones, I think we need to look at what is our inventory of land for C1 zone properties? And what is inventory of land for C2 zone properties? If you take, uh, warehousing and storage indoor, we allow it in a C2 zone by right. While we prohibit it in the C1 zone, I think we could make it a conditional use in the C1 zone. And what could happen is that we look at the location, we look at surrounding land uses, and if it's, if it can accommodate, uh, since it's indoor storage, uh, again, you know, through that conditional use process, we make a determination as to whether or not it's a good fit. But again, it goes back to this question about inventory. What do we have that's zone C1? And what do we have that's zone C2? And, and by making, by allowing a, um, indoor storage facility in a, in a C1 zone, would that preclude a higher and better use for that parcel than the use that is being proposed? Because what's going to happen is that we're going to start getting requests for zone change. You know, I want to build this in my property, I hear zone change. And then he goes through the process of collecting money to do his own change, then we're back to where we were before. If we build this with flexibility, make it conditional. If you satisfy all the regulations, land use requirements, et cetera, et cetera, and we can make those findings for a CUP, uh, we, we can allow it. So.
I'd be less inclined to allow warehouse and storage in a C1, which is, we used to describe as neighborhood commercial. Because there's nothing about it that's going to attract tourists or local. There's no really public aspect to it of entertainment or there is a service to them, but they also tend to be bulkier. And they definitely interrupt the streetscape, whereas I think the other things could, because they have a showroom and an office associated with them, or they have a tasting room or a restaurant or whatever it is. They would fit into the streetscape. And I think that's why you need the use permit is that they do, they don't put their working side up front. But instead they put their more public face and there's just no public face in warehousing.
Do, do these listings for warehousing and storage, do they reflect the current? Zoom in, even on the current code?
Mm-hmm. I think pretty much we only allow. Is there, are you asking mini storage?
Uh.
I guess I could look in the depth.
We'll find out, I'm right here.
Yeah.
Hello?
Here we go.
Um.
Uh, facilities offering enclosed storage with individual access for personal, uh, personal effects and household goods, including mini warehouses and mini storage.
Yeah, right, great.
Which I believe is consistent with current code.
Right, and, and, and what I see happening, uh, in, in some urban areas is that because of the need for those services, they are locating these kinds of facilities in close proximity to residential, so that you don't have to drive fifteen miles to go and put your excess luggage into a warehouse space. They're kind of incorporating them. And actually, they're, the design of them is actually getting better. So you're not getting, you know, that, uh, you know, street view is, is a little bit more, uh, more palatable, uh, to the residential, uh, uses. Because you, C1 zones are more likely to be more adjacent to residential than the C2 zones would be.
Mm-hmm.
That's just, yeah, that's just my two cents.
On all the warehousing and storage is, if this reflects the current code, I'd stick with it.
I'm going to look it up.
Okay.
I think it does.
I actually want to say it might be a use permit in the C2 zone.
Mm-hmm. Like I could see allowing.
Let me see it again. Navigate.
Potential use permit.
So have, have we addressed Michelle's question? Or maybe I misunderstood, the contractor and materials yard under C1? Because it does provide a service. What if you were a tile contractor and you had a showroom? And, you know, then you use the remaining part of your property to store materials or whatever? I mean, I, I would think it kind of almost fits under the definition of C1.
Yeah.
I would think that that, that situation is just retail sales with a stock in the back.
Right.
Not.
Exactly.
But it's, but it's.
But you're going to have a couple of trucks and you, they're going to, depending on what kind of a contractor they are, they have materials stored there. But, so I think you would have to have some rules about
Right.
them being enclosed or hid behind a fence and.
So I, I would just propose if that could be just a conditional use.
Exactly.
Yeah.
That's what I'm suggesting, not a.
Can I, can I summarize where I think that we're at?
Please.
Um, I think considering, um, allowing contractor materials yard as a conditional use in C1, um, and then I also am hearing, you know, kind of this desire or recognition of how there are sometimes different components of things like, oh, is it really just retail with this other, you know, I store my materials in back? Um, and again, kind of the mix of uses. So these are all for primary uses. I just, I want to assure you that like, yes, you might not want kind of storage in, as a primary use in your C1, but if it's somehow an accessory use to some other active use that's allowed in C1, you know, those kinds of things are allowed. Or if you have, you know, um, if you're selling boats, say I have a boat showroom, you know, I'm selling boats or something and I, you know, have some storage area for that. Those are two separate uses. That's a primary use plus these accessory operations that happen with them.
Okay, so, um, under the current definition of our, under our current code, in the C1 zone as a CUP, it does allow for a warehouse. Now, it doesn't stipulate what type of warehouse it is. It just says, under business services or service businesses, auto repair, upholstery repair, funeral home, warehouse, and crematories are allowed by CUP in a C1 zone.
So warehouses and mini storage warehouses are currently defined separately.
Separately.
So it's permitted use in the, a mini storage warehouse is a permitted use in the C2 zone?
So I, I have a question for staff. So when, when we say it's a conditional use, is there, do we have to define what that conditional use is? For example, the conversation we had right now with, for C1, for contractor material yards? Or how do you go about making that determination of what is a conditional use for that piece of property? Do we come up with that?
So it means accessory. So.
I don't mean, do I mean?
Not conditional, conditionals, we're telling you.
Yeah.
They are what those conditional.
And those are based on, you know, what is the purpose of the zone? And what sort of impacts will, do we anticipate, um, you know, um, will potentially occur with that particular use in that zone? Given the proximity, for instance, C1 zone is, is considered to be that, that transition or that buffer zone between residential and more intense, um, commercial, and then further on down the road, industrial uses. So it's a, it's a local commercial zone, which is supposed to be, uh, local community serving, um, you know, retail shops, um, things that folks in the residential neighborhoods will immediately need. Uh, drugstores, um, you know, little variety stores, things like that.
So, it's a case by case.
Right. So, I mean, you have to envision that you, it's very likely that you would have C1 zoned property right on the backside of a, of a residential subdivision zoned R1. And you find that example down in Lock Antenna, for instance. Um, right up next to, um, to all the residential houses in Lock Antenna subdivision, you've got C1 zoned properties with commercial uses. A pizza factory, other restaurants, you know, some little retail shops, um, things like that.
I think, I'm going to take a stab at this, because I think if we rely on the idea that it's accessory, accessory sounds like it's the smaller square footage. And if you have a contractor's yard and a showroom, the showroom is likely to be smaller.
Right, right, right.
So the accessory doesn't really.
Yeah.
That was asked.
But I think you have to have the requirement that they have both components to allow them at C1.
So it's not just simply a, an equipment yard?
Yeah. And it's kind of the same thing with the food processing. Like I was in this little place that made salt. And so it was fancy artisanal salt. I would say they had more square footage in that salt drying area, which was completely visible to the retail area with glass, so you can watch that process. But I wouldn't have, so the processing took up as much space as the retail shop. But it, to me, it felt like it would be fine in a historic, it was in a historic center.
Mm-hmm.
And, or not in our.
Sure.
County. Or it could be in C1 and there would be no problem. But if it was, you know, six thousand square feet of processing and a hundred square feet of shop, no, it belongs somewhere else.
So how do we memorialize that? That's, that was my question. I mean, if when we say that's a conditional use, don't we have to define what we're asking?
Oh.
Our expectations?
Um, commission instrument. What it really means is that the, the, uh, the nature of the business itself goes through a review process. And through that process, you come up with specific conditions that we think would mitigate the impact of that particular use.
So.
So it's, it's kind of a, it's kind of a, on a case by case basis. So the use itself will be deemed to be a conditional use as opposed to a use that is allowed by right. And the reason why we allow them as a conditional use permit is because we anticipate that might, there may be some impacts that would need to be mitigated.
Okay, so, and I don't want to belabor this, but you know, but I will. I will.
Issue really, for businesses.
But I mean, I just, you know, I always think that we need to be consistent. So when we, I'm, I'm a, I'm going to use, I'm a tile contractor. I want to open a little shop and a storage in a C1. How do you remember, you know, what, to what extent are you going to allow me a conditional use? It's based on what? Based on the conversation we're having right now? Is it based on stuff that's written down?
Based on application. So as an application, you have to fill out for, for a CUP and you would add, you would list what your, uh, what your operations are. And, and that's what we go by.
I make those the parenthetical notes like we've done in other.
Yeah, just ask.
That says.
Well.
Yeah, what you want is to be predictive.
I, I mean, that's one of our big goals.
Right.
Could I make a suggestion?
Sure.
As Thomas, okay, I, I, I love what Michelle is saying here. And I think what we really need is another line that agricultural food and beverage processing, less than another square footage, accompanied by a retail outlet, and then allow it with whatever use permit you want in the C1, uh, you know, in whatever zone you want, C1, C2, um, or both.
And the same for the contractors would be, the similar definition would be contractor's yard accompanied by showroom.
Right, if you want to, if you want to ensure that they're enclosed within a building, you can enclose it within a building.
That's perfect.
Yeah.
And, and correct me if I'm wrong, Martha, but we can add those as additional, um, either additional, yeah, additional regulations? Or you could use, or you could plop them down at the bottom of this thing under the, uh.
Yeah, I think we get it going and will.
Yeah.
I'm grabbing your temples at words.
She's deep in.
I got it.
Okay, so to be continued, is that where we're getting?
I would use it to come back with traffic.
So.
Yeah, I feel like they understand, we're just trying to open up that
Got it.
Little bit.
So are, are we all okay with the warehouse and storage uses, indoor boat storage, personal storage, all that, the way it's written? Because we started kind of venturing down into that category.
Well, I am unless it was somehow limited in size, so it wasn't this humongous storage facility. I just don't think it's cost effective.
Well, I was going to say, now, now we're starting to, yeah.
Yeah, it's a different thing altogether.
They may have to build a very large one in order to make it feasible.
Right. Oh, I, I'm okay with the warehousing and storage how it is.
Yeah.
Michael, did you have a question?
I, I just, I just, it's interesting that the boat, the boat and RV storage requires a conditional use. And I'm assuming it has to do something with not only the size, but also the fact that.
Outdoor storage?
Yeah. Right?
Yeah.
I need that.
Yeah, screening requirements.
Screening requirements, uh.
Screening, yeah, screening, lighting, those kinds of things, noise.
People kind of get all goofy when it comes to storage of things outside.
Okay, that's what I thought, that's what I thought.
I, I mean, personally, you know, just from my experience, I think the, I think all storage units should be conditional uses, not, not, not permitted uses. Because the ones we've had, the only way we can actually apply any kind of mitigation to them is through a CEQA process. If, if they fall outside of CEQA, we, we're, it is just basically go get your building permit and build. But they do have impacts. And, and unless we have a section of our code that specifically identifies what the development standards for story warehouses should be, which would include lighting, noise, hours of operation, and, and things of that nature, uh, we haven't made any progress, in my opinion.
You know, just good to get back to the comments that, you know, Michelle and staff have made and Tim. You know, we're looking to make this more user friendly. You know, how many times, and I'm new to this board, this commission, have we had people who didn't understand? You know, and to have a document, I, I, I'm a tile contractor. I've got a piece of C1 property, I want to open up a house. Like I, I can, you can refer them to a page and have them read, and they, they, that can make a decision of whether or not.
Right.
You know, I mean, and I, I like that part. I, I like the fact that, you know, it's going to be more user friendly and at our end, we may not have as many folks coming forward saying, I didn't get this, I don't understand.
And if we have uses that we have concerns about, and we can, we can mitigate those by rolling in the additional regulations or, um, you know, the specific limitations, and not require someone to have to go through the conditional use permit, which, I mean, we're all very well aware of what that process is like.
So now.
You know, if we can, if we can mitigate it in the front end, um.
If you guys keep talking, I'm going to keep reading. So now I'm looking on page thirty-two at retail sales, and I see building materials stores, feed and farm supply stores. And I think depending on their scale, they could fit in C1 too. Probably with an administrative use permit or some kind of oversight.
So, um, and I made notes of that. And actually, while we were talking about the contractor's yard, I also went back and made some notes on building material, um, stores. So what I think, and I think you're exactly right. The more you look at it, the more you have like kind of comments and questions on things. What I might suggest is that we kind of continue on. And then you can all look back at this and maybe even provide kind of Gina, like a marked up copy or something with different thoughts? Because I feel like if we go through each individual thought through this process, we might be here, um, I don't know, I guess just. I don't know, I guess just in the interest of, of moving forward.
I.
Well, I think it's, it's good to have the discussion as a group because ultimately I have made some statements today that somebody countered with, and then I agreed with their counter. And, and so you wouldn't have to deal with a, a note from me.
I think. And I mean, we would still talk about them, but maybe at the next, you know, study session where everybody gets the chance to look back at these in light of the conversations. And so we're not going on to the next one and then kind of coming back, I guess.
I feel like we could take the note away that we're look, looking to open things up in C one where we can do it responsibly. And we could let you guys look at it. We can look at it and then we can come and talk about it a week from now or two weeks from now when we've all had a chance to digest it a little more.
Sounds good.
And then in the interest of moving on, we could go to the next section.
Cause I think when you look at this again, you'll have additional thoughts. So yeah, we could kind of like collect them and revisit. I think that might be helpful.
On a completely different subject, I'm certainly glad you included a definition for reverse vending machine. I was having a very hard time picturing what this was.
And, and, and I would appreciate if staff would say, and, and that, hey, you know, we're going down this road and you guys say, hey, that's, I don't know if we can do this. I mean, it's kind of crazy. You know, I mean, so you, you have to be our checks and balance, uh, because you've lived this and you guys are going to live this, this new code. So it's important for you, if we go down a road, you go, oh, you know, I, I just don't know if that's possible. You know, I, I don't expect you to be yes folks.
Right.
You know, I'll never stand.
Right.
Oh, I don't think Gina is a yes.
Gina, I was more worried about you.
I think all of us are informed by our past history and experience with particular projects. So we're thinking of how to solve a problem that happened at some point.
Yeah.
So you, especially Martha, may have a broader perspective.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, she's, she's written code in many other jurisdictions. Yeah, we're familiar with ours and that's it.
Okay.
Well, there's, there's a lot of options. So we always start somewhere and then we, um, you know, kind of massage and correct. So, um, anything else in particular we wanted to talk about finishing out the use allowances for commercial zones?
Yeah. Um, I had a question about, uh, bars and nightclubs.
What page?
At, uh, page thirty-one. And it looks like they're permitted in the same, uh, C two as school, private school facilities. And it gets back to that question about what do you want located next to your school?
Yeah, but, but the reality is a private school can be placed anywhere.
Right.
So.
But that's the point. If you're going to have it as a per, yeah, but what's this? The schools there first, right? And, you know, the next door neighbor goes bank, you know, the, the, the store that was next door goes out of business and now somebody wants to put a bar or nightclub there. Is that what you want as permitted? Or would you rather have a use permit look at that?
I don't know.
Bars and nightclubs generally aren't open during the same time school's open. So maybe it's not a problem.
Bars are, bars are.
I don't know. Just saying.
Bars are, nightclubs not. Bars are. I know, it's just, it's just odd. If you don't think that, if you're okay with that, then you're okay with that. I mean, for gosh sakes, they sell booze at gas stations now, so who cares? Um, but I just wanted to point that out. There, if someone wants to put that bar next to that private school and, you know, a hundred parents show up upset the next day, um, you're good, all you're going to have is a code that says, oh, it's permitted. Um, and my experience with that is.
It's only permitted in C two.
It's only permitted, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. But, and so are schools. So I guess what I'm saying is.
Yeah.
If somebody put the school there first and then somebody comes in with a bar second, there may be some concerns. Now, I, I, I realize that they won't come to you. But my, and, and I get that, you know, some of these kind of code provisions, we really don't want to deal with those problems, so we'll just not deal with those problems. But my experience is in other jurisdictions is that supervisors still get blamed for those, uh, use conflicts, even though they were permitted by right.
Supervisors you blame for everything.
Yeah, that's my point. See, that's my point.
That's how it works.
Before, before you let these potentially not conflicting land uses happen by, uh, as a permitted uses, you might want to think that over.
I, I think it depends that it would be one thing for a public school. We know where it is. We can say that a bar and nightclub should be a minimum distance from that school. The problem with private schools is they are basically business occupation sometime. Well, not always. Depends on the type of private school that they are.
A lot of charter schools are located in commercial districts.
Right. But, but the parent, I guess, having been in education for over forty-five years, the parent has a choice. If this were a public school, I would agree. Because at some point you don't have a choice. But that parent has a choice of whether or not to send that student, their student to that school.
Okay, okay.
Tom's point is if the school is there first.
Yeah.
You, there's no way to stop.
The bar.
The bar or nightclub coming in because it's a permitted use without any.
So, so we should make it a PC or, I mean.
Or an administrative use permit or something.
Or you can, if you wanted to, you could roll in that specific limitation. It's gave you, you know, some specific distance from a public school, just much like cannabis.
And then, but then the private school moves out because sometimes private schools are literally in a commercial base. They don't have the same requirements as public schools. So sometimes they move in and out, especially some of these, um, kind of specialty little STEM schools. You know, they're, they're literally in strip centers.
Well, why not make it an administrative use permit?
Yeah. I, I can see the argument for that administrative.
Then you get some consideration of what's going on. Would, would you, would you see that as a, as a good result? Since it would result in your having to do more?
And is.
One of the things that I think we should accomplish with this zoning code update is to somewhat eliminate some of the challenges that we've had at staff level with processing information or not being able to process certain land uses because our code is either, uh, not informed enough or it doesn't even identify the use or it's too restrictive. So we're not going to go through this zoning code update, uh, two years from now or three years from now. And I do not like the idea of having to come back after doing this with zone change requests and things of that nature. Because what's going to happen is we're going to find a situation whereby a land use is not allowed in a particular zone. This particular property owner is very adamant about being on that property. And he's going to say, what is it going to take? And we're going to say, well, your zone C one is only allowed in C two. Well, I want to zone my property to C two. So we'll go through that process, spend a lot of money, be in front of you. And if it requires a general plan amendment, we go before the board. So this zoning ordinance update should alleviate some of those concerns. Not a hundred percent, but at least substantially enough that we're not back to where we are. And.
In this particular situation, uh, private school is established, bar wants to come in right next.
Right. Then I, I think the bar, we should make the bar not to be a permitted use. We should make the bar, some kind of a conditional.
That's why.
A P. Yeah.
Including that in.
That way, that way we can look at the locational provisions. Is it.
Can I add something to that?
Whatever.
So, uh, Michelle, you'll be most familiar because it's, um, it's, um, the use is downtown Murphy's. Um, there's an ABC license, ABC issues alcohol beverage licenses for obviously different, different types of alcohol sales and consumption and whatnot. Um, when we're talking about tasting rooms, um, you can get different licenses depending on who you are. For instance, um, if you are, um, a winery, you're a bona fide winery and you've got a wine grower's license, you can also have a tasting room under that wine grower's license. The license doesn't have limitations, um, as the, as a license for say a bar. Now, if you are a wine broker and you are buying wine from other labels and you are selling it in your retail store and you are opening up a quote unquote tasting room, you can't operate under the O two wine grower's license. You have to get another ABC license, which is the same equivalent license as a bar or a tavern.
They're not quite the same.
They're not quite the same, but they have the same ABC license. And this is what I'm trying to point out is we have been treating them the same based on their ABC license. Now, how you guys, if you want to deal with that differently, just take that into consideration as we're moving forward. So we are lumping those tasting rooms in the same category as a bar and tavern because of the ABC license.
Exactly. And, um, because. Yeah.
So maybe.
And because tasting rooms are no longer limited to only selling tastings. They can actually sell wine by the glass. They are essentially a bar.
A bar.
And they're no, they're not required to have food. So they are essentially a bar.
So some of the tasting rooms have now moved over to selling wine instead of just a tasting.
They sell only their own wine.
Right.
But they sell it by the glass.
Yeah.
And some of them sell appetizers with that. You know, it's, yeah. So it is a good point.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't know who I was having this conversation with the other day where we were talking about cigar lounges and, and hookah bars and things like that. If we do not call them out specifically, uh, in our code, we're going to run into the same problem we ran into with that cigar lounge, uh, in, at Murphy's, uh, which is, uh, a few, I don't know, doors down from a tasting room and come to find out that, uh, the, the smell of cigar affects your palate when you're tasting wine. So again, this is the time that we want to take all the challenges we've had over time, understand what they are and try to fix them in here. So we're not playing a guessing game. We're not making the director having to make a compatibility finding, which some of you may be opposed to. Uh, you know, uh, so let us be as clear as possible with this exercise because we're not going to do this again until maybe another five years or longer.
So are we comfortable with changing that P for bars and lounges to an A? Administrative use permit? That way they can look at.
I would, I would support that.
I'm, I'm for it.
Martha, you okay and Gina?
No. I'm not.
I'm a little conflicted because I feel like now we're giving a private.
Right.
The fact that the private school got there first, we're reducing the amount of commerce that can take place. Why would we not do it the other way and say, tell the school, well, you can't. But the school would know that that thing's already there. I just, we're allowing a private school to control what else can happen in an otherwise, um, compatible zone.
Well, that is not the reason why I would, I, I said what I, what I said. The reason why I said what I said is that you need to start looking at what are some of the perceived impacts of a bar as opposed to a school. Uh, more likely, you know, the bars get very rowdy. They get very noisy. I, you know, especially in urban areas, bars have been a real source of concern to residents. Uh, you know, fights and law enforcement reporting, uh, basically demanding on some of the basic services. So getting an understanding of those things ahead of time rather than saying, yeah, go get a business license and open a bar, let's learn a little bit more about this bar. Is it a biker bar? Is it a, what kind of bar is it? What are the hours of operation, et cetera, et cetera? So, you know, it's, if we, 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 again, we need to take this opportunity to close some of the loopholes we have, to improve the processes that we have. Because I see what's going on in our department and this is what I think we're trying to fix it. There is no point in going through this exercise and, and back to the same, uh, back to the same spot.
So what recourse do we have if that private school? And I, I, I tend to agree a little bit with Michelle. I mean, I, um, about, and, but I want to make it easier. I wanted to make it, you know, somewhat transparent. But if a private school was there and a bar came in and posted their ABC sign on the window, would that end up here if the parents all raised heck? I mean, so, I mean, right now it's, it's, right now it wouldn't because it's, it's permitted, correct?
Right.
So who would, would those concerns then go to the board of supervisors? What, what happens in a situation like that?
Permitted by right.
Yeah.
Permitted by, both of them are permitted by right.
So they could just duke it out themselves. Yes.
But I, I think.
I will, as a land use lawyer, I'll tell you what happens. As a land use lawyer, somebody files suit, one of them's a, that the bar's a public nuisance. And then that is what we're trying to avoid with the zoning ordinance. We're trying to give people a heads up, hey, don't invest your life savings in a, in buying a, you know, a facility that's next to a school and expect to start, put a bar there. You know, we're trying to avoid those kind of conflicts.
Gina, I understood you would not be in favor of making the C two bar an administrative use permit thing. Would you like to expand?
Um, I don't know. I guess I'm just looking at it from a, you know, economics kind of a standpoint. I just, I just hate the thought of, of further restricting. I mean, you look at what we've got established now and, you know, I mean, I could certainly do some research that the sheriff's department to find out whether or not the existing bars we have are a nuisance. But I think they're a draw, not just for the, for the residents here, but for the tourists as well. And I guess I just, and, and most of them, some of them are even now associated with food. Not all of them, but, um, you know, there's a lot of activities people like to partake. And I just see this as more of a, um, uh, another layer of, you know, bureaucracy that I just don't think is necessary.
Well, what if we approach it from the other side? What if we just take the school out of the C two zone by permit and then we don't have to worry about it?
But then where is a private school?
H C, C P and C one.
Yeah.
Which is probably more appropriate anyway.
Right. It depends on the size of the school and how, what kind, if it is.
Yeah.
A permanent investment of funds to actually build a school, which there are schools, private schools that are truly an extensive campus. And there are ones that are in storefronts. And so it's hard to, you know, one of them you might want to give precedence to and work around. And the other one is like, well, they could be gone next week. So did, now we just turn down other people based on the fact that they're there? That, that's my concern.
Right.
And while I agree that we don't have a lot of bars, nightclubs, lounges here that are close to anything, but we have restaurants that have full bars in them that, that operate just like a bar.
Right.
With vouchers.
Yes.
With vouchers.
So if we're going to say restaurants are okay, but now not the bar.
Well, I, on balance and, and with the planning director saying, you think it's okay, I'd, I'd go for the administrative use permit on the C two zone bar.
Which would make it the same as C one requirements. I don't feel a huge amount of angst because an administrative use permit is not a particularly onerous.
No.
Absolutely not, and it's not expensive. And the other, the other caveat is this, let us always think about the future. Twenty twenty-three, Calvers County looks this way. Ten years from now, this could be a totally different looking county. So you have to plan for those changes that you might have to encounter in the future. So you have to plan for those changes that you might have to encounter in the future. Not think about the past, think about the future.
Well, I'm fine with that. I mean, I think it's not that big a deal one way or the other, truthfully. We don't have a lot of new private schools being developed. And if they're just a tenant, would they even come to us anyway? In a strip mall, we're not gonna be seeing any of it anyway.
It would be a change of occupancy.
You're just gonna have to understand.
Get a business license, go through the building department.
Understand the location. I mean, a school's gonna need space. I, I don't see bars stuck out in the middle of, you know, large parcels. They're, like you said, they're usually maybe on your main street. They're located in a strip mall. They're, um, I, I get, I just don't, I just can't see. I, I understand the general argument, but logically I just can't see them actually ending up next to each other. I mean, I'm, I'm not saying that there's not a scenario out there that would, you know, I, I just.
And do we wanna give precedence to the bar or to the school? It's controlling who gets to be next to them. That's really what it comes down to.
Well, yeah, we wanna give less precedence to that use. That would, that would constitute a nuisance, and that would be the bar.
Or, or do we, I mean, there's the argument to be made that the school is less commercial than a bar.
Well, yeah.
I'm happy to pass it on to the planning director.
Yeah, I don't know. You might wanna ask some of those people that live next to the elementary school.
Well, that's what I was just going to say. But, you know, we say private school, but that is such a broad range of potential facilities that it's hard to, to know.
Okay.
I feel like it's not my hill to die on. I, so whatever everybody feels, maybe we, maybe we just flag it to come back and look at it one last time once we've all had time to think on it.
I do have the uses and commercial zones flagged as something to, you know, have a follow-up discussion on so we can incorporate that.
Yes, thank you.
So we, we're gonna have to then, I don't know if we're gonna talk about cannabis. I, you know, according to Julie, that's, but, you know, I'm thinking of the, the old Budweiser warehouse at the end of town. You know, um, and that clearly has probably enough space to where a private school can get into. And some of the things that, I mean, so. Yeah.
But it would be, I think that would become an issue because the cannabis, there are restrictions on how, quote, sick can be.
Oh, there is already, yeah.
Also, I, I don't, I can't, I'm not prohibiting you from talking about, I just recommend.
I know, I know, I'm not saying.
I just wanted to make sure you don't feel like you can override it.
I feel like we're singing out one person's nightclub.
Colds about cannabis, that's what we can't do.
We can't do, I just, yeah.
Okay. Now can, now can we maybe talk about industrial zones? Cause I'm sure we have a few things there.
Finally.
Yep, okay.
Do we wanna finish out just real quick, um, the development standards for commercial zones, which really, um, again, carry forward current standards? So just wanna say that in case anybody has something to talk on there.
Yeah.
I didn't know.
Uh, so moving into the industrial zones and the land, allowed land uses, um, this has very limited residential uses, really limited to a caretaker unit. Um, some limited public and semi-public uses, more in the M four zone, which is the business park zone, which is where you will see a more variety of allowed uses. Um, limited number of commercial uses. Again, fairly limited, except, um, some allowances for eating and drinking, establishments, retail sales, vehicle services. And then, of course, um, the widest variety of industrial uses allowed in that industrial zone.
So we allow tasting rooms in M one and M two, which are the higher intensity zones, but we don't allow restaurants. And I'm wondering, is that like, we think we have a caterer there and they're allowed to have people come in and taste?
It, it, it's more of the tasting with the agriculture, like, uh, food and beverage manufacturing. Um, or, you know, um, yeah, so you might have the actual wine processing in these industrial areas. And the tasting rooms are accessory to, and it's actually turned, and somebody pointed out this out in the beginning. It's, the definition of a tasting room is, you know, offering these food and beverage projects for tasting as accessory to a retail sales facility. And what that is intended to mean, and we need to clarify, that say you had, say I have a cheese factory.
Right.
Um, in this zone.
Tour their cheese factory, let you have a taste.
I can have a taste and I can sell my products. So I'm selling the cheese that you're tasting.
We don't have any objection to it, really.
Could stinky cheese affect the taste of the wine?
Yeah, they complement each other.
It's the reverse of what we're talking about. It's just where the production is by far the bigger piece of the project. And tasting is a small thing, but, but would we stop people from coming and tasting? You'd have to look at what the parking situation is, given it's a different, but, yeah, it's probably not a problem.
On, on another subject, under public safety facilities, when you look at the definition, does not include jails or retention centers, this sort of thing. I assume that it should.
Well, I think those would be under the public service.
I thought we had correctional facilities.
Yeah, I think.
Oh, detention facilities. So we do have detention facilities, which are.
And where is that?
Probably in the P S.
Yeah.
Public service zone, probably.
Yeah.
Public service zone?
Right, a different zone entirely, not industrial. So I, I think this is more like a fire station or sheriff's substation, something like that.
That's what it's described, okay.
I have a question about restaurants as well. It says that restaurants aren't allowed in the M one and the M two district on page thirty-seven. But on page forty, it says that outdoor dining is allowed with an administrative use permit in M one and M two. But I thought, and I, I thought outdoor dining was associated with an existing restaurant, so I'm a little confused. I must have something wrong?
No, and, and we could clean that up. I, outdoor dining by definition is accessory to a primary, um, use. So if that use doesn't exist, the outdoor dining couldn't exist. I think, um, by including it as a permitted accessory use would cover things such as legal non-conforming restaurants that are already there.
And we just had, we have, I don't know if you saw this, because it's not in Title seventeen. We just passed an outdoor dining or, in, in Title twelve.
But it's not about, this is.
That was platforms, structures.
Manufacturing zones, it's a little bit completely different situation. I, I can see how it might fit because we're allowing tasting and you could do outdoor tasting there.
Okay.
A taco truck.
That's right. So if you allowed a taco truck to come in for lunch for your employees or whatever, you might have an outdoor seating area.
Thank you, thank you.
Well, um, um, Madam Chair, again, um, looking at public semi-public uses, emergency shelters and clinics. Um, this also goes back to inventory. How much of, how much of M one properties are there? How much of M two properties are there? And how much of M four properties do we have? Or are we gonna be able to create through, through, through other instruments? When you think about emergency shelters, I don't think they should only be restricted to the M four zone. Uh, because that's something that we should have and be readily available. Uh, and it should be wherever it is that there's space for them. Uh, so prohibiting them in an M one and M two zone, I'm not so sure that's the best idea. And the same thing will go to clinics. M one and M two, they're manufacturing zones. Somebody gets hurt, uh, you know, to take them to a nearby clinic. Uh, prohibiting clinics in places where people work, uh, again, it's kind of counterintuitive uh, from that particular standpoint. I can understand a hospital, but clinics whereby, you know, you can have your, your wounds stitched or, or something like that should be easily accessible to places where people actually work. So allowing clinics in those zones also, uh, is perhaps not, not, not a bad idea. Again, it goes into this, how much of M four, M one properties do we have? How much of M two properties do we have? And how much of M four properties do we have? So when we know what, what those inventories are, it would make these kinds of decisions a little bit better. If we're saying we don't want them in the M one and M two because we're holding them for heavy industrial uses, well, okay, through that industrial use process, people get hurt. And if they need to go to, you know, nearby clinic, that should also be something that should be easily accessible to them rather than going to a hospital. I mean, those are the kind of things that, you know, we need to kind of think about, um, or not.
But they put those clinics, they wanna put them in a retail setting so people can find them easily. I don't think you'd wanna drag people. So that, what I see on a philosophical level, looking at this and from the big picture, not the individual things, is do we wanna really increase traffic through these manufacturing areas by drawing outside people in? It doesn't seem like we really want to unless there's a big benefit. I can see how having a clinic close by is a benefit. I looked up the description of clinic earlier because I was concerned about it somewhere else. And they're, they're really talking about licensed clinics, not just the little, the doctor who calls his place a clinic.
Right, well, and there's often, um, you know, more unsafe situations. You, you're dealing with, um, heavy, you know, large truck traffic, um, you know, heavy equipment that's being run. Um, you know, think of, say, a transfer facility. You know, you've got big garbage trucks. You've got, you know, um, machine shops with large, um, you know, uh, truckloads of metal. Right, steel and, and whatnot. So, um, you know, you do have much larger vehicles on those interior road systems uh, for those industrial areas. And they do have a tendency to be a little more, um, uh, less safe than you would in your commercial, uh, interior road system.
Be an argument is why you need a clinic.
But it could be an argument is why you don't want people visiting that clinic.
I understand, yeah. Um, one thing I needed to get educated when I finally found the definition for emergency shelter. We're not talking disaster emergencies, we're talking about homeless people.
Homeless shelter.
Which is that, is that term, emergency, something that comes from the state?
Well, emergency shelter is identified in our housing element. And it, it is something that we have committed to providing. And as of today, I don't think we have any at all.
I think the question is, is, is the term emergency shelter a state definition? Or is that just, cause it seems a little, I agree, it seems a little, um, deceiving because you, you say emergency shelter and the first thing you think of is shelter for, you know, people in an emergency situation such as, right, a storm or the Butte Fire or something like that.
Right.
And you're not thinking of a homeless person as a homeless shelter.
Right, uh, you know, chapter, uh, section, uh, chapter seventeen, zero six, zero seven, eight, three of our code currently defines emergency, what an emergency shelter is. And it's referred to as a housing with, with minimal supportive services for occupancy for six months or less by a homeless person, person fleeing domestic violence and needing emergency housing to, due to a disaster. So in the case of a Butte Fire, this particular definition is what emergency shelter will be appropriate. And we need to have them go where there's space for them to go, right? And say, oh, well, you can't go in the industrial zone, you, you only can only go here. So we should allow that in any place that can accommodate an emergency shelter because it is in our housing element and we are required to provide them.
But that's not the same definition as we've got here.
I pulled something up, and there is a state law definition in Health and Safety Code five, zero, eight, zero, one.
Yes.
And it says, emergency shelter means housing with minimal supportive services for homeless persons that is limited to occupancy of six months or less by a homeless person. No individual or household may be denied emergency shelter because of an inability to pay.
Right, and that's exactly how it's defined in, in the draft.
And that's not, that's not very different from what we currently have in our code, seventeen, zero, six.
Actually, I think it is different.
No.
Sounds the same.
No?
It's the same.
It sounds the same? I thought it was a reference directly to, um, truly emergencies and housing people for, it didn't say anything about, I didn't hear, I didn't hear you saying anything about homeless in the previous definition. So I'm just wondering, is there a difference?
Housing with minimal supporting services that is limited to occupancy for six months or less by a homeless person.
Well, I'm reading that definition. I think you were reading the definition from current code prior to that.
Yeah.
Did I, am I missing, I must be missing something.
I thought that Gabriel's definition included dis- disasters.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Didn't hear that in that.
Well, that's not, that's what I'm saying. That's not what the definition in our draft code reads, which is different than what our current code reads. So, and they seem to be two different things. So I'm wondering, um, maybe Martha and I need to look into that a little bit further.
I mean, earlier there was, there was some term that was used and then we put in parentheses, what we really mean is, you know.
Right, so what I don't wanna do is be using the same term for two different definitions is what I'm trying to get at.
And figure out who we're talking about.
Right, right.
Um, just so I understand what Gabriel's referring to. Um, so are you talking about a type of, uh, emergency shelter that would be for, say, people fleeing a fire or a flood event or something?
Yeah, or anything, yeah.
Or it could be, I think, I think it was even referred to as, uh, someone fleeing domestic, uh, um,
Domestic violence?
Domestic violence.
Okay, I do, because I do think that domestic violence and the homeless, um, person's thing is a little, is different than a disaster emergency shelter. And I guess my question is, is do those get built as standalone facilities? Would you build a disaster shelter?
Disaster shelter, no, you use the auditorium or whatever's basically available.
Was that why the Red Cross would be your expert source?
We, well, well, in answer to that question, we do have specific requirements for emergen-, for emergency shelters in our code. We talked, you know, it details if you're building an emergency shelter, it shall have the following, you know, characteristics about it. Uh, the concern here is that our housing element requires us to have, uh, emergency shelters. Getting one, uh, on a permanent basis has been a challenge. Uh, we can use somewhere temporarily and, and, and when things go. We can use somewhere temporarily and when things go away. But we don't have a place where, on a regular basis, this is a designated shelter for certain types of uses, all things being considered. So, and the fact that we don't have any of that in our county that we could say, oh yeah, here's an emergency shelter, is one of those things that I think we need to pay some attention to.
And I think we have to keep in mind, and coordination with the Red Cross would be a good thing to do, that we don't have a definition of emergency shelter that could be, that is terribly restrictive as far as lighting and everything else.
Oh, yeah.
To deal with people who are rendered homeless because their house just burned. I mean, that's, we have homeless and emergency and this sort of thing all mixed in together. But we have to make sure that in a disaster, there can be a quick provision. And Red Cross does contracts with churches and stuff so that they, they can set it up.
I think the disaster thing is taken care of because they're using temporary, they're using something that already exists temporarily. And it doesn't matter where it is, what the zoning, I mean, it's a disaster. You're just putting people wherever you can find the space. I think the home, the situation for the homeless or people displaced because of domestic violence, something along those lines, that's something you're building and making available full time. I don't think we should be building it in the M1 and M2. We wouldn't choose those zones to do that, the M4 maybe. So it seems okay the way it is to me, but...
Well, but sometimes those zones are where you already have the infrastructure to allow those types of uses. Building a shelter from scratch is expensive.
Of course, we would have the infrastructure.
Vacant underutilized, vacant underutilized, kind of a semi-industrial type of land use, you know, with office and warehouse space would be an appropriate location. And it could be in an M1 or M2 zone. I guess the point I'm making is by just prohibiting them from those zones, we're taking away the ability to have those kinds of options open. Because, again, it goes back to the question of inventory.
Supportive, it just doesn't feel like a compatible use to me. In M4 it does.
Well, I mean, if you think of the location of our industrial uses, they're so far away from other, you know, from other things like your retail, grocery, doctors' offices, your emergency rooms. They're outside the townside areas. We don't have industrial that's located here.
We don't have much.
But the M4 zone is also out in the same locations that M1 and M2 are located. Because it's all allowed in the industrial land use designations.
So instead of banning them from M1 and M2, again, do we have administrative use permit provisions for M1 and M2, emergency shelters? If you have a situation where you have a lot of vacancies in M1 or M2.
Well, right, if you have buildings and there's empty space, then I would allow somebody to put that in there.
Maybe there's an appropriate scenario.
I mean, it does seem like an administrative use permit, you could at least look at it and go, well, what else is in the neighborhood? Are we going to be really preventing other? Or is this an okay thing for the time being at least?
Yeah, you know, again, it goes back to inventory. What do we have and where do we have?
And I have, and I have no idea.
Exactly, yeah.
I have a concern on this first page of public and semi-public uses in the commercial zone. And it should be in the industrial zone. We're going to go back to colleges and trade schools. Trade schools make absolute sense here, right? You want to have prentices learn their trades in their industrial centers, that makes sense. The concern I have is that if a college locates in an industrial park, it may have, you know, may, may... Normally, we want to save industrial zones, industrial parks for noisy uses. And those two could conflict. So I think we had a situation like that in Toyon. Didn't the industrial park end up getting some kind of school use in there?
There's a middle school.
A middle school across the street.
Yeah, didn't that kind of mess up the noise, you know, your willingness to tolerate noise, you know, in the toy, in the industrial center? So I guess I'm concerned about that. And if, if there was a way we could either separate colleges from trade schools or make that a use permit thing so you guys could say, hey, you know, we really don't want a college college here. We don't want a, you know, if we're going to put a satellite facility from a community college in our, you know, we don't want it messing up our industrial park.
And we don't want a college to move in and then say, geez, the guy moving in next to me is making a lot of noise.
Exactly.
Dust or whatever.
Wouldn't common sense dictate the college, the university diligence before they moved into an area?
No, but what I'm saying is what if the college comes first? Again, you see, you open an industrial park, you're going to, what I don't, I'm not seeing so much, what I'm seeing is more industrial parks rather than industrial sites. So you have a large parcel and people want to open it up to multiple uses. And you look at the code and it permits colleges and trade schools. Trade schools make absolute sense, colleges not so much. But as you said, Toyon moved right across the street from the industrial park. The middle school moved right across the street. Do we want to, and as the director's been saying, let's try and avoid the problems we've already seen. So I'm just trying to avoid a problem we've already seen.
Is this part of our current, Gina, our current?
Oh, let's take a look.
I don't remember colleges anywhere else.
We blended two uses, I think.
Right, I'm just looking.
While Gina looks that up, I would just say it is tough to unblend the two uses. The two uses really are kind of blended if you try and distinguish what that cutoff is. Is a business and computer school, is that a trade school or is that a college? A community college that, you know, our community college in our area does a lot of the trades and is a trade school. That is where you would go to learn mechanics, welding. It, so there, we don't, it, I guess that would be the challenge with that is drawing the line of what is, is one thing and what is another. I do think they're not all semi, how to drive a semi-truck trade schools. You know, you might learn that in, within the context of another type of school or college, so, anyway.
You know, I guess what I'm envisioning with a college is like Modesto Junior College. I mean, it takes a large amount of space to provide a college and, you know, how much space would be left? I mean, I don't know, I mean, this is a rhetorical conversation I'm having with myself, but I don't, I don't see, I don't know. I don't see it to be a conflict.
Well, we're not going to, we're not going to get a full-blown community college, but we might get a satellite facility. Might get a smaller facility that, and it might be linked with, by computers to the home campus, stuff like that.
We had that situation, we've had it at Keller East High School when I was there. We had it at Glory Hole when Columbia College, I mean, and, you know, I just, you know, yeah, I don't know.
Okay.
M1 seems like it could be a fit for a lot of these things that both Gabriel and Tom are bringing up. But when I look at M2, which is the actual manufacturing use, it seems like we would want to preserve any M2-zoned land.
For that?
Truly for that kind of more heavy manufacturing.
So I'm not currently finding that use enumerated as permitted or conditional in either M1 or M2.
The colleges and trade schools.
Yes.
Yeah, and we show them permitted in both. And I could say light industrial, M1, so perhaps it's a rocky complex.
But actually, I'm wondering if we, I think we don't, I don't think we define college and trade schools separately. I think we roll them all into schools, but I'm still not finding.
I'm okay with them being rolled in together.
Yeah, I'm just not finding them.
I just think that this.
Unless they're falling under this public facilities definition, I'm not finding them.
And of course, they are provided for in the public service zone. I mean, it isn't that this is the only place.
And there are four of the business parks, which they seem that would be fine also. So I think we could split the difference if we wanted to look distinguished between what's appropriate in the light industrial versus the general and heavier industrial.
I agree.
So, you know, like in light industrial, maybe a clinic makes perfect sense. Maybe a college and trade school makes perfect sense. But in M2, really, that is intended for trucking terminals and manufacturing.
Right, fabrication.
Yeah, and maybe that same argument applies to emergency shelters.
Right, I mean, you've got propane gas companies, you know, fueling stations, stuff like that.
Something just caught my eye, that's what I'm talking about. Under commercial uses, adult entertainment. We are permitting it by right in the M4 zone.
Yeah.
And we're not allowing it in the M1 and the M2.
So we have to remember that M4 is not industrial, well, it's business park.
Business park.
Yeah, I mean, the light industrial zones, I've seen, I've seen adult entertainment uses allowed in the light manufacturing, which would be equivalent to an M1. And I'm not so sure we want to permit them by right, juvenile.
I actually think that's a perfect place for that. They're not going to end up next to the daycare.
I'm saying as far as, as far as allowing them by right or allowing them by some kind of an instrument.
I think we have to allow them by right somewhere, right?
No, no, we have to allow them, but we don't have to allow them by right. We can regulate them. So we would like to know exactly what type, what the hours are and things like that. At least that's how other jurisdictions have handled this kind of research.
Are we on adult entertainment?
Yeah.
Are we still talking about colleges?
In industrial zones.
Colleges?
We are birdwalking, Michelle, can we get?
We're still.
Yeah, let's, let's get.
Emergency shelters and colleges and trade schools, where are we?
Let's go through one by one.
Yeah, we're still on page 37, on page 37.
Colleges and trade schools, I would be okay with them either with an administrative use permit or permitted by right in M1. In M2, I think they maybe are not the best use of that limited land allocation.
But we're all okay with them as permitted in M4?
I'm okay with them permitted in M4.
Yep.
And I would probably be okay with, with the administrative use permit in M2 if it turned out that they were like a truck driving school or something that fit into what was going on there. But do we want to get that?
No, that's not.
Let's not, okay.
So are we talking administrative use in M1?
For colleges, okay.
For colleges and trade schools? Is that the consensus?
I would go with permitted.
You're fine with it permitted?
Permitted in M1 and.
And not allowed at all in M2?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, and then what about, and then M4 permitted also then?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, now, emergency shelters. How does everybody feel about, are we fine with them in M4?
Are we just saying because of the size of the facility there?
Yeah, and the surroundings and stuff.
But my, you know, my concern is that we're going to put little kids in it. Yeah, okay, I have four, four is good, I'm thinking, I'm sorry.
Boy, these kids are starting to become real hindrance.
Yeah.
Doing this for the future, guys.
That was a joke.
Okay, so.
We love our children.
We don't want it in M1, I agree.
So emergency shelter in M1? It might be okay with a use permit.
Use permit?
A ministry of use?
Conditional or AUP?
I was thinking an AUP, maybe investor.
Okay.
Okay, and then not in M2?
Not in M2.
Okay. We're okay with government?
I have a question about the administrative use permits. Who's going to get notice of those? And are those appealable to the, will those be appealable to the planning commission?
It is, it is, it is appealable to the planning commission. It is a planning director decision. Property owners within 300-foot radius of the location are notified of the decision and of the application itself.
Okay. Is there any way we can revisit the 300-foot part of that?
To what?
To like people who sign up to be noticed about administrative use permits.
Sure, yeah, it would include anybody who may have requested to receive any decisions made for AUPs would also be included.
Let's do that, that sounds fine, thank you.
Do we have a mechanism for that now?
I.
Okay.
It's, I think it's, it could be based on a request. If somebody requests to receive notice.
I think we need to look into government code.
Is that okay?
As I understand what you're saying is that it would be, I want to know anything that's going to be going on with this particular property. It's not that every administrative.
Yeah.
Well.
Well, I mean, well, I mean.
We're going to have to do some research into the, into the legal requirements.
I understand Gabriel's concern.
Yeah.
Mr. Infresino, I think, is asking to have a notice of every single administrative use permit.
And there is some legal requirements for us to notify people, but I'm not exactly, exactly sure of what that includes.
I could look at what the minimum is for the notice list.
Sure.
And it would be a policy call whether you wanted to impose more of an.
Bigger arrangements.
You know, there's consequences of accidentally failing to do this additional use as well. So keep that in mind of whether you want to go beyond the legal minimum.
Yeah.
Well, also, I just, I think there's got to be a balance of public interest and private interest here.
Sure.
And if there's going to be an administrative use process, then, and if there's going to be an appeals process, there needs to be a reasonable notice process as well. Otherwise, the appeal process doesn't mean anything. So if you want to go with the minimum in the state code, that is, of course, one of your options. My concern has been for quite some time that the federal courts have been looking at land use regulation under a heightened scrutiny standard. And that has evolved over the last 35 years. But at the same time, the state's minimum notice requirements have not evolved. So I'm just trying to find a way we can make a reasonable accommodation for people who want notice of administrative use permits in the future.
I think that's great, but I think that's beyond what we're talking about right now.
Well, the question, the reason I bring it up is because we're sort of casually throwing things in the administrative use pile.
You're right.
And if there's going to be no public notice of that beyond 300 feet of property line, then I can see a problem.
Well, Tom, the same thing occurs with a CUP, though. There's a public hearing by the planning commission, there's a public notice of decisions made for the AUP by the planning director, which is appealable to the planning commission within 15 days of the decision. So it is still a, it is still informational, there's still addition, there's still information that's provided to the public and to whoever may have requested or will request to be notified of such a decision. But if your question is, should we increase the radius from 300 feet to 1,000 feet or larger, that is going to take something more than a planning director's decision.
And if, if, if the, if your decision is that, if you, if, if I want to get on a notice and you will send notice of administrative use permit decisions, that, that's fine, we'll just. that, that's fine. We'll just, a voluntary notice, um, opportunity is, will suffice.
I don't think we have a mechanism to provide notice that you could sign up for a list that will provide you the results of every single AUP request right now.
We do state law minimum right now, and I've not, you know, and we have had circumstances in the past with out-of-county lawsuits happening between applicants and other entities where had we had that kind of requirement and anybody forgot a list or anybody forgot on their computer who had been on it, there would have been difficulties. So I would be cautious about committing to every single administrative use permit to the extent that that's not required by state law. I think the board would want to have a say in that kind of policy.
And Julie, the only person who could appeal the administrative use permit is the person who filed it, correct?
No, no. And the interested party who, a lot of, it's very open who can appeal. There's a lot of people that could have standing to appeal. If they participate at the decision, at the first decision-making stage, that they're allowed to participate.
And so they, they could appeal a planning of an administrative use.
And, and, and if the planning commission remembers, this is one of the reasons why I had informed you that decisions made at staff level will be presented to the planning commission as informational, uh, issues during your meeting. So it is because we don't want to create this, uh, this idea that we're doing things, uh, inappropriately or, or, or in a cocoon. It is a process. Uh, it is not as onerous as going through a CUP. It's less expensive. But as far as I'm concerned, if you look at the type of uses that are allowed with, with an AUP and the process, I think they are commensurate.
So since you're providing that to us already, but you've been doing it verbally, if we had that as a written attachment to our agenda each month.
Yeah.
Once a month or.
At, at every meeting.
At every meeting.
If there are actions.
That would be available to the public because they could be signed up.
Absolutely.
And they would receive the agenda and they'd know.
Yeah, if there are actions taken as an AUP by the planning director, it would be attached to your, as part of my presentation to you. If there is nothing, I will give a verbal report. No AUPs were approved or anything of that nature.
So the logic behind it is that you're notifying the people within that sphere of influence of that person requesting, which is logical. It makes sense.
Right.
So if you, if you deny it, then it can be appealed. If you approve it, it still can be appealed. By those folks are gonna be impacted by it in that sphere of influence.
But it could be appealed by somebody that is beyond three hundred feet. They have some sort of standing, some impact to them.
Yeah.
And so I think that's what Tom is trying to say is.
Yes.
How would they find out?
I see.
Happen.
Right.
Right. If you have, right. If you, let me give you an example. In a rural, it's, you may, if you live in San Andreas, you may not understand the concern, but if you live in a rural area where there's, you know, five acre lots, there may only be four neighbors who get noticed within three hundred feet. The rest of the neighborhood wouldn't, might not even get noticed. And if the facility has a lot of traffic or a lot of noise or something like that, then, um, the, the impacts go far beyond the three hundred feet. So that's the, the point I was trying to make. If, if, if we're moving things to the administrative use permit, there needs to be an effective way to provide reasonable notice and timely notice and a reasonable opportunity to be heard at the planning commission.
So I would suggest that we create a policy that as a courtesy to the planning commission, that we get a report on, with each agenda, but that we not make it a legal requirement of any kind. So that way, anybody signed up will get the same information that we will get. But if there's a mistake and we miss something or it gets delayed and doesn't get out for two weeks, we're not creating a big liability for the county. Is that possible?
I think, sure. And I think Mr. Infresino is well aware that if he has a particular type of use he's concerned about, he can make a public records act request for the permits that were issued. But that way, the ones that are most concerning to his organization, he, he's not without an ability to get information about this.
But how would he?
But if the appeal period is fifteen days, that's not gonna be useful.
Right.
Yeah.
And if I have no notice of the, of the decision, that's not gonna be useful.
No, I think what the chair is suggesting is a way that
Yeah.
be a matter of public record without being a matter of legal.
At least as a starting place, it's a way to work in a direction that hopefully provides something and that we can see how that works.
So did you want to write that into the code, the courtesy notice?
I don't think so. I think it would just, because writing it into the code seems like that, I would think this would just be a policy, a request of the planning commission to our planning director who's already offered to do it.
Well, I mean, and, and another way, another way that I've seen other jurisdictions do it is that decision would be posted on the county's website.
Right.
Yeah.
So that way, everybody, yeah, that's, that's probably easier. So that decision would be posted. Everybody gets to see it and they can do whatever it is they want to do with it.
We request that you post.
Yes, yes.
Thank you, Gabriel.
Fire on the clinics.
So I'm just getting to that. Clinics, I, I kind of feel like maybe it's the same thing.
AUP.
With an A.
And then a.
No, and then a P.
Yep, good.
See how agreeable it is after? You heard me. We're all agreeing.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I.
Adult entertainment.
I jumped to God.
I'm okay with how it is.
Well. I, well, okay. I, and Martha can, can, can chime in. I would strongly recommend that we do not allow those types of uses by right without understanding exactly what they are. I would say that we, we are not prohibited by law to allow them by right. What we are prohibited for, by, we're prohibited from not allowing them. So if we allow them as some type of a use, a permit, you know, something similar, because these are traditional types of land uses that have created a lot of problems for a lot of jurisdictions. And I keep saying this, we need to start thinking about the future. Calaveras County is changing. It might not be changing as quickly as we want to see it, but I'm seeing signs of, of this community changing. We currently do not have a single one on record. But, but that doesn't mean, you know, it's not gonna, it's not gonna, it's not gonna happen tomorrow or the day after. But to say, oh, yeah, just go ahead and open it, and then the next thing you know, we start getting all these calls. That'd be a dereliction of my duty as the planning director to just, to just not.
If it is an administrative use permit, you get the call.
Absolutely. I would, I would.
Every location is what you're suggesting, in every zone?
Yes.
Every zone?
Well, I mean, I, you know.
AUP or a CUP?
AUP.
AUP.
AUP. So, so I don't think we're getting too, too heavy-handed on them. Martha, what do you think?
I defer to county council on that. I don't know the specifics of whether you have to permit them somewhere or if it is okay to require a use permit everywhere.
So why don't we get some clarity on if there's any requirement around that and just leave it a a question for right now to come back to.
Especially what rights do they have?
Right.
And I, you know, by tomorrow, since I won't have enough time between today and tomorrow.
Oh, no, no, no. Whenever. I mean, we can come back to it next week. It doesn't have to be tomorrow.
No, it doesn't.
Shall we talk about tomorrow?
Yes, I, but I wanted, it would be really cool if we could get through the industrial zones tonight. And I don't think we had that many other comments, right?
Uh, we only have a few more pages. Um, I would like to leave some time and not go all, all the way to four o'clock so that Gina can, can, you know, can leave at a decent hour.
So, or does everybody want to leave this in the middle of the, and we could start on page thirty-eight tomorrow and give everybody a chance to look more closely.
Is there anything glaring that you folks have noticed that?
I, I, I have not.
I have not either.
I haven't.
But we haven't heard from Mr. Infresino yet.
On the industrial section?
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I think I'm done.
All right. I think we're done then.
We're done. Okay.
Yeah.
So let's leave this in plans.
I just, wait, I just, I'm sorry. I apologize. But under transportation, communication, and utility uses, recycling collection facility. Under M, I'm sorry, page thirty-nine. Under M4, it's not allowed. But I thought we just did that, right, Gina? Last week, we looked at that facility and we upgraded it. We changed the zoning from.
We changed it to M2.
Right, but at M4, it's recycling is allowed in the current code.
Under M4?
No, I don't think.
Oh, you don't want that.
I think it is. I think, I don't, I left all my stuff home, but I thought when I printed it, it was.
Are you talking about cow waste?
No, why, well, that cow waste brought up the reason why it went from, but M4, I thought there was something, there was some recycling that was allowed in an M4 zone.
Didn't we switch them from M1 to M2? Because M4 is business park and that wouldn't.
Yeah, we don't want business.
We went from M, is that what we did?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so we will plan tomorrow to begin on page forty-two and talk about public and semi-public zones. And then, Gabriel, was there something you wanted us to look at tonight before we call it a day?
I'm just kind of going through. Now, uh, this, this.
Look at it?
Quickly take a look. Taste your room, food preparation, funeral parlor.
M1 and M2 or M4? So, um, tomorrow will be a little bit different. Martha will not be joining us tomorrow. She's making me go solo.
It's going until six o'clock tonight.
Don't tempt me.
Thank you for being here today.
So be gentle tomorrow.
Yes.
So if we have any of those questions that I can't answer, then we'll just be taking notes and I'm gonna rally back around with Martha between now and next Wednesday. And then Martha, I'm, I think you and I talked about you're, you'll be able to join next Wednesday? Yes.
Would it be possible if we just picked up from page thirty-seven next, tomorrow, rather than?
Yeah, I'm kinda, are we, are we sure we've completed it? Cause I mean, I've got some red notes here that I don't think are.
Right, let's just pick up.
Just pick up at thirty-seven and kind of.
Let's pick up from thirty-seven and, and go from there tomorrow.
Okay. And also, in the last meeting, we said we would finalize our approval of the letter, the comment to the supervisors about the greenhouse gases.
Yes.
I'd like to get that joint meeting.
Oh, yes. I have spoken to the CEO and we are looking for a date for that meeting and it is being received very well. So I will let you know when. It's either, I think it's gonna be their meeting, but are they gonna convene as a joint session with the planning commission first or, you know, switch into a joint session with the planning commission in the middle of their meeting? So we're still trying to work out those logistics. And so, once we've get all that taken care of, then we'll let you know. One thing that I think, uh, we would probably do is rather than you sitting next to your supervisor would be for the planning commissioners to have their own, their own separate seat.
And I tell you, we've heard nothing from the consultants.
No.
Or is recalculation.
Absolutely. Nothing so far. But, but we've heard rumblings from the ag community.
From the what?
The ag community. Yeah, so we'll talk about it.
So we do have regular items on the agenda tomorrow, right?
Not that I know of.
No, yes.
We don't?
The GHG is a standing, the GHG is a standing item. It's the next meeting that we have, uh, a regular, I don't think they have.
So are you saying that tomorrow is all code update?
There's a free GHG item if there's a need to discuss that.
And so, yeah, it would be code. So.
Item if there was anything to.
But we don't have anything to discuss tomorrow? So I, I just wanna. Do you, do you want me over here at nine AM? Okay. That's what I'm getting at. Or am I gonna sit in my office and watch what's going on?
Right.
Not gonna be much happening before you get.
Okay.
Yeah. And, and on that note, you would want to continue this meeting to tomorrow.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So would someone like to make a motion to continue?
Can I make a comment before you do that?
Yes.
Um, I just want to let you know that I will send Annette the link that I created today to YouTube for the video that Gina and Gabriel produced yesterday, talking about the zone update. It's really in-depth. I think it's really informative and educational. And then I am cutting out just the little piece that we showed how to navigate the website, and I will upload that separately. So if somebody just wants to be able to try to go through the website stuff, it will be available. So I'll send both those links to Annette tonight.
So we could help distribute that to the public?
Correct.
Point here, yeah.
Yes.
So that would be great.
I would like to make a motion. A motion to continue this meeting to tomorrow. Second.
Hold it in favor? Okay. And opposed? Passed unanimously with the three of us. I have a question about Commissioner Parker. If we could confirm that he is planning to be here tomorrow, but also can we ask him to review this, today's meeting?
You're not voting.
I know we're not voting, so.
There's a formal requirement that he do, but obviously, in order for him to contribute to the extent we revisit something talked about today, maybe, um, I mean, I could send him an email asking for him to please review.
Oh, I didn't mean before tomorrow necessarily. I just meant before the whole process is over. If there's anything that it seems like.
I'll send it, I mean, I'll send a message to both.
I guess.
Both of them, because we don't have a formal resignation.
Yes, we do. I got an email from Annette that said we have a formal resignation from CJ.
Okay.
At least that's my understanding. Is Annette on still?
That's my understanding.
Yes, that is true. Check that in.
Okay, news to me.
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
Okay, uh, we did have no commissioner reports besides, please get me out of here. Planning director report?
None, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Then we are adjourned.